Good evening. We'd like to welcome everyone to the January 17th Cabarrus Board of Education Business Session. I call this meeting to order. If you will please stand.
Presenting tonight's colors are members of a combined flag detail representing the Air Force JROTC programs at Central Cabarrus, JM Robinson, Mount Pleasant, and Northwest Cabarrus High Schools. And their personnel includes Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Cameron Gillum, Cadet Major Sarah Henson, Cadet Captain Ethan Brewer, and Cadet Airmen First Class Alaric Williams. Honoring America tonight with the singing of our National Anthem were members of the Cox Mill Elementary School Chorus and their personnel included Lisa Adikari Mayem, Daniel Bestoris, Eva Bibin, Gavin Brown, Abigail Chelliraj, Bethany Chelliraj, Aiden Chisholm, Dushita Yarlagada, Emily Escobar, Ananya Gali, Harrison Ha, TJ Hatcher, Akshara Intara, Rohan Jude Shelton, Durane Kalagara, Ayon Khan, Shitanya Kishore Kumar, Sammy Nuna, Emma Oraweala, Connor Parrish, Cooper Poor, William Scott, Magda Srinivas, Ahana Srinivasan, Emmanuel Timbug, Hudson Vandergoot, Bedisha Basist, and Isha Venkatesh. The Director of the Cox Mill Elementary School Chorus Program is Mrs. Tammy Ortiz. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Members. We will move to 3.01 to adopt the agenda. Before we adopt the agenda, we will be changing the order of the strategic plan will be at 8.03 and the recruitment and intention presentation will be at 8.04 on the agenda. Is there any objections to that change? Hearing none, can I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
So moved.
So we have a motion by Ms. Escobar and a second by Ms. Lindsay. All those in favor of adopting the agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. The January 17th Business Meeting Agenda has been adopted as presented. We will move to 4.01 and our Impact Through Education Awards. We'll have Mr. Phil Furr to the podium. Welcome, Mr. Furr.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Dr. Kapicki, good evening. Tonight, we'll present Impact Through Education Awards to students and staff at Cox Mill Elementary School. Our sponsors for the Impact Awards are our friends at Equitable. At this time, I would like to invite our Equitable representative, Leo Spardella, to join me at the front of the room. Before we get started with the awards, please accept our sincere thanks and gratitude to Equitable for its continued sponsorship of the Impact Through Education Awards. We are in the 13th year of honoring those making an impact in our schools with this award. We appreciate your support and thank you for helping us celebrate and recognize deserving staff and students. We also want to say a word of thanks to our Cabarrus Regional Chamber and to the Concord Trophy Center for providing us with award plaques each month. Now, on to tonight's awards. May I have the Cox Mill Elementary Administrative Team come forward? Our first honoree from Cox Mill Elementary School is Amoy McGill. Amoy, please come forward with your family. Amoy's bubbly personality and smile make everyone feel welcome. She tends to be a peacekeeper and helps everyone get along and see other people's points of view without being overbearing. She is a steadfast friend and will stand up for others when she sees them treated poorly. She is an active participant in class. She is a leader during group discussions and works to make sure all voices are heard. She is a talented competitive cheerleader. Congratulations, Amoy. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Cox Mill Elementary School. Our next honoree from Cox Mill Elementary School is Ryan Parrott. Ryan, please come forward with your family. Ryan is a quiet leader but truly leads by example. She is extremely responsible and takes leadership roles seriously. She's a member of the NCDPI and takes this leadership role a top priority. You can always count on Ryan to help other students as well as her teachers. She exemplifies good citizenship at all times and she is a fierce soccer player. Congratulations, Ryan. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Cox Mill Elementary School. Also from Cox Mill Elementary School is Teacher Stephanie Martin. Ms. Martin, please come forward with your family. Stephanie Martin makes an impact on everyone around. Her kind smile, shining eyes, and helpful hands create a warm environment wherever she goes. Over the years, Ms. Martin has served the school as a kindergarten teacher, a second grade teacher, and most recently as the MTSS coach. Ms. Martin puts 100% effort and then some into all that she does. She is a true servant leader, always looking for ways to support others. Ms. Martin is a devoted teacher, wife, mother, colleague, and friend. She always puts others before herself. The world of education is better because Stephanie Martin is in it. Congratulations, Stephanie. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Cox Mill Elementary School. And finally, from Cox Mill, a support staff member, Sandra Colaboss. Ms. Colaboss, please come forward with your family. It is hard to think about Cox Mill Elementary without thinking about Sandy Colaboss. She is the fine silk that is woven into all aspects of the school's tapestry. Throughout her time, Sandy has served the school in many capacities from parent volunteer, PTO board member, and clerical media assistant extraordinaire. She is the glue that holds Cox Mill together. It is safe to say that there is not a document, poster, or book that Sandy Colaboss has not had her hand on. Ms. Colaboss is always there to lend a hand to whoever needs it and is usually there without even being asked. She has made a tremendous impact on the Cox Mill community. And for that, Sandy, you're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Cox Mill Elementary School. This concludes our Impact Awards presentations for tonight. Congratulations to all our recipients and thanks again to our partners, Equitable and the Cabarrus Chamber of Commerce for your partnership.
Mr. Furr, if I may, Ms. Moore, I would just like to thank you very much for being here this evening and to recognize all the service that you have provided to the Cabarrus County School System over your career. Many may not know this, but I do and others do too, that Ms. Moore has retired. And it speaks to her quality and the kind of person, her character, that she took some time to come back today and honor her employees as probably the last part in one of her last parting acts. But I will say to you that, as I told you before, you're always welcome. We appreciate all the service you've given to the children, the dedication you've exemplified at Cox Mill Elementary School. And during my tenure here, I can say that you were a model principal and outstanding in what you did and we appreciate all the work that you have done at Cox Mill Elementary School and everywhere you've been in your tenure in the Cabarrus County School System. So I wish you well, good health, and many blessings in the future. Again, thank you so much for being here this evening.
Okay, Board Members, we will move to 4.02 and the Holiday E-Card winners.
Madam Chair, again, Board Members, Dr. Kapicki. It is my pleasure to introduce you to our Holiday E-Card winners for 2022. This year's contest, the 12th Annual, featured more than 100 entries from students across Cabarrus County Schools. Tonight, we'd like to honor those six who were chosen by the superintendent as the best of the best and were featured as part of his holiday communications. Our theme for the 2022 Holiday E-Card Contest was Joy to the World, and these students did a fantastic job of bringing that to life with their artwork, which, if you'll direct your attention to the screen, we're able to feature in our 2022 Digital Greeting Card. At this time, I'd like to invite Dr. Kapicki to join me at the front of the room and ask our Traditional Design winners to please come forward. In the Traditional Design category, our winners are June Blow from Mount Pleasant Elementary School, Lana Hamzy from Roberta Road Middle School, and Christian Acosta from JM Robinson High School.
Hold those nice and level. There we go, they're all right. Here we go, on three, one, two, three. Gotcha.
Next, we'll have the winners from our Digital Design category, please come forward. Our winners in Digital Design are Chloe Elsa-Sons and from Harris Road Middle School, Kayla Elsa-Sons, and from Northwest Cabarrus High School, Reagan Hopkins.
Here we go, one, two, three. I got you guys. Congratulations.
Okay, Board Members, we will move to 4.03 and the Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month and invite Dr. Marion Bish to the podium. Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Kapicki, Members of the Board. As always, it is a pleasure to share with all of you and our viewing audience, both in person and live stream, our Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month. I want to introduce to you the Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for January and express, first of all, our sincere thanks to Mr. Tim Vaughn and Hillbush Ford for their generosity and sponsorship of this recognition program. The Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for January is Cindy Flake, a first grade teacher at Charles E. Boger Elementary School. If Ms. Flake and any of the administrative team that's with her would like to come forward. Oh, you're second grade now, so second grade. That's my favorite, you know, that's what I started out with. So we want to share the nomination that was submitted by a parent about Ms. Flake. Ms. Flake makes learning fun. She's energetic and commands the attention of the children no matter what the activity. Mrs. Flake truly loves her students and they really love her too. My daughter comes home from school every day and plays school in her room. I can hear her mimic the enthusiasm and energy Ms. Flake has while she is teaching either her siblings or her dolls math and digraphs. In addition to academics, she encourages the kids to be people of good character. She recently had her class write thank you notes to staff members and took the entire class on a walk around the school to deliver them. It's important to me that my kids have a teacher who not only teaches how to read and write, but also models virtuous characteristics. Thank you, Mrs. Flake. You are making a difference. Mrs. Flake, thank you for the impact you're making to teach and engage the children in your classroom and congratulations on your selection as the Cabarrus County Schools' Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month.
Okay, Board Members, we will move to 5.01 and the approval of the minutes from the open meetings for December 5th and December 12th. I need a motion to approve the open minutes. So I have a motion by Ms. Lindsay, a second by Mr. Furr. All those in favor? Any opposed? That motion passes. We will move to 6.01, Board Chair Comments. So one of the Board of Education's tasks is to serve on standing committees as reflected in Board Policy 2230. This year, we have our Board Committees and we've added some and taken some off depending on what we felt as a board was important to us. So I'm just going to go through the list and read these as well as they will be posted on Board Docs. So we have our Athletics Committee and our liaison is Tim Furr. We have our Board Student Intern Program. Our liaison is going to be Pam Escobar. Our Cabarrus County Education Foundation Committee Chair, Amy Goff, is over that and we'll have Tim Furr as our primary liaison. Our Calendar Committee Liaison is going to be Pam Escobar and Laura Lindsay. Our Child Protection and Fatality Team is going to be, our liaison is Keisha Sandage. Our Curriculum Committee is going to be Pam Escobar, Tim Furr, and Sam Treadaway. On our Financial Committee, our liaisons are going to be Sam Treadaway and Keisha Sandage. Our Legislative Agenda is going to be our Denise Adcock and Rob Walter. Policy Committee, our liaisons are Sam Treadaway and Rob Walter. Our Realignment Committee, as needed, will be Laura Lindsay and Rob Walter. Safety Committee will be Sam Treadaway and Tim Furr. We have three new teams this year. We're calling them School Visitation Teams and we have them as elementary, middle, and high school. And all the Board members will serve on these teams. We'll hear from Sam Treadaway about that at the committee reports, what those actually will be doing there. And then the Student Health AFC Committee, which has our liaison, Sam Treadaway, Laura Lindsay, and Keisha Sandage. Our Town and City will be Tim Furr for Midland and then I will be the liaison for the other three as needed. And those are our committees. And I just want to thank our Board members. I know that you see us here twice a month, but we serve on a lot of different committees and then also a lot of our Board members are engaged in our community in a lot of other different ways. So I'd really just like to thank them for their service to the Board and for Cabarrus County in these capacities. We'll move to 6.02 and I will turn this over to our Superintendent, Dr. John Kapicki.
Thank you, Mrs. Adcock. To follow up on that, to remind everyone that January is National School Board Appreciation Month, and I'd like to thank each of our Board members for the work they do every day and the impact that they have on over 35,000 students in our community and our school system. As Mrs. Adcock pointed out, you see the meetings twice a month, but there's so much more that goes into that and our Board members are very dedicated, not only here at the meetings, but the work they do outside of preparing for the meetings and then the community commitment that they tend to be involved in their communities at various different levels and at various different things. And I do appreciate that. So we appreciate you as caretakers of public education and we hope to help you to empower our youth to continue to realize their aspirations and dreams. And on behalf of our students, administrators, and staff, I would like to say thank you very much for your work and your dedication to our community and to our school system. Secondly, I'd like to congratulate CC Griffith STEM Middle School Teacher, Mrs. Natalie Meheha, our 2022-2023 Beginning Teacher of the Year. Natalie has been selected as one of the 27 finalists to compete for the NCCAT Beginning Teacher of the Year for the state of North Carolina. I wish her luck as she moves to the next level of competition in March. And Natalie represents all those wonderful things that we see on a day-in and day-out basis of all of our teachers. And when I met Natalie, she was so gracious and humble and was so thankful to her fellow colleagues and her fellow teachers for helping her achieve this award. So I'd like to congratulate Natalie, but also thank all of those veteran teachers out there for their dedication and for their commitment to making sure that as new teachers onboard, that we continue to mentor them and help them to be successful. Natalie's success is every teacher's success in this district. And the one constant in this district is the wonderful teachers that we have. So I do appreciate that work and I wish Natalie well as she represents the Cabarrus County School System. So congratulations, Natalie. I'd also like to remind folks that our high school exams are taking place this week and we have early dismissals at the high school level only. This Saturday from 8:00 to 4:00 o'clock at Lincoln Middle School, we will have our Board Planning Session. And also coming up on February 6th, we will have the Board of Education Work Session at our next meeting. I'd also like to take a moment too to thank all of those yesterday who took part in the part in the Martin Luther King Celebration. It was a really wonderful celebration to attend, and I don't want to miss anyone, so I'm going to look to my notes here. But at that particular dedication ceremony and the folks that were there, I'd like to recognize Dr. Kim Luder, Reverend Donald Anthony, Mayor Bill Douche, Commissioner Steve Morris, our Councilwoman Betty Stocks, Reverend Leonard Jarvis, Representative Diamond Stanton Williams, Mr. Norman McCullough, Mr. Jamie Fleming, Judge Juanita Boger Allen, our own Mrs. Carla Black, Dr. Tracy Flemings, Mr. Gerald Lundie, and Reverend Roland Jordan. I'd also like to thank the support of our Board members for attending, and that would be Keisha Sandage and Pam Escobar. It's a really nice way to honor Martin Luther King and to celebrate Dr. King's special day and historic moment for all of our community. Very well done. I thank all of those that took part in that presentation yesterday as we celebrated Martin Luther King Day. And then lastly, the last two things, I'd like to ask Dr. Bowers to come up and give the Board a brief overview of the transportation situation, as was requested at our last meeting. As you know, Dr. Bowers has just joined us and become part of our Cabinet. He is our Chief Operations, excuse me, Chief of School Performance and Auxiliary Services, and Dr. Bowers, it is yours.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. And first of all, may we begin by saying good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board, and Dr. Kapicki. I'm here tonight on behalf of our Transportation Director, Mr. Art Whitaker. Unfortunately, he couldn't be with us tonight. He's tending to a family matter. So, I would like to provide the update with the Transportation Staffing Update and kind of bring you up to speed with where we currently stand as of today. So, previously, as I understand, at the beginning of the school year, it was reported the Board of Education that the district was in need of 40 commercial licensed driver positions. Today, that number has been reduced to 17, and that's certainly noteworthy because there've been a lot of tireless efforts and I think a lot of creative processes that have gone into that. And so, we certainly want to keep our transportation team in mind as we kind of go through some of these accomplishments, but also want to share with you some of the efforts that they certainly undertook to be able to kind of get us to this point right now. You know, one of the things that certainly was able to kind of sort of help reduce that number, we did have some employees return to Cabarrus County Schools. So, certainly the grass is not always greener elsewhere. I think they certainly found that coming back was certainly an environment that they felt comfortable with, so have been able to kind of add through those means. Some of the vacancies that have been able to certainly be filled came from hiring new employees who had a commercial driver's license already. So, certainly there was some benefit with those who came ready with a CDL in hand. Transportation team was also able to work alongside the Human Resources Department and hire existing teacher assistants with a CDL to run some of the single routes across the district. So, really kind of sort of being able to leverage some of this expertise and some of the skills of our existing staff to help kind of sort of offset the challenges we were facing. And the greatest contributing factor really came from our transportation planning team. When I talk about creative processes, this is where it really started to kind of emerge. They were able to really think outside the box, and by doing so, they could restructure existing resources so that some of the routes can be consolidated, and thereby that allowed us to be able to kind of operate with the same efficiency which we otherwise had. So, none of this happened by accident, so certainly there's a lot of effort going into this. So, from a shortage standpoint, mentioning those 17 CDL positions, we are currently short right now for McKinney-Vento driver positions. Those are certainly easier to fill. One does not need a CDL to certainly step into that position. As I understand, too, Transportation Team does have some lead on some candidates, so certainly we hope to be able to kind of sort of put a further dent in that as we move forward. And lastly, I am pleased to share this, that our EC Transportation Department is fully staffed, and that is certainly welcome news. We do need a few transportation safety assistants, otherwise known as monitors, but ultimately being able to have those drivers in place is certainly key. So, this is really encouraging news, you know, as we say in here and share with you tonight, but there still is a nationwide shortage, and I think we are certainly all aware of that and certainly how that positions districts, to be able to kind of be creative with some of their outside-the-box thinking. Locally, those 17 positions that are unfulfilled, they are assigned a route right now that does not have a driver, so that is certainly always important to kind of sort of bear in mind. And those routes do serve, as I understand it, three schools each along the way. But again, as I'll emphasize, without the creative efforts of our transportation planning team, as well as the assistance of our schools, they have certainly recognized this, have been very supportive along the way as well, we would be facing more daunting tasks in front of us. So, we've made some major headway. I think that is certainly is a key takeaway, but we're not where we want to be, and so we'll continue to kind of sort of strive and kind of sort of get to where we hopefully have zero reported vacancies in the future. But ultimately, our transportation team, again, hats off to them for what they're doing. So, thank you.
Any questions for Dr. Bowers?
Thank you so much. That's good news. So, we had, we needed 40. We're at 17. How many positions were eliminated with that creative planning?
I don't know if I know that off the top of my head. That's certainly something I can investigate and be able to share back out.
Please do.
Yes, ma'am.
So, this is definitely a breath of fresh air. Thank you so very much for that update. We should be patenting that, all that that you explained that we did. We shouldn't share that with anybody. I'll tell you that right now. The one question that I had was, for the positions that are currently still open, is there any suggested timeframe for when those, we think those will be filled with all of this creative planning that we've been doing?
That's a great question. I would imagine that certainly timeline is ASAP, I would imagine. Certainly, it's always the goal in that sense. As far as where they stand in terms of the pipeline and how many candidates may be in the queue, I don't know if I know that information. I can certainly ask, and we can certainly find out, kind of, are we moving in that direction, and are we seeing at least some interest still out there?
And I know one of the schools that we heard so much about in the difficulty with transportation was the new school, Roberta Road. Has any one of those drivers picked up the slack for that school?
Again, ma'am, I'm afraid I don't know.
Not going to answer that though. So, the answer is yes, that we did assign a drive, a route out there this past, within the last two weeks. We have assigned one of the new hires out there, and our goal is to fully fund, fully take care of that school. That's one of our priorities, but we have put one out there to lessen some of the stress out there. And in terms of the timeline, the timeline, as Dr. Bowers said, it's fluid, it's immediate. We are beating the pavement every way we can to try and hire drivers. So, anyone out there that needs a job or is looking for a job, please reach out to us, either HR Department, Transportation Department, call my office. We could line you up with some employment and get you hooked up to the right person for working in our Transportation Department.
Just thank you to everybody who's helped with this. We really were struggling there, and it seems like we've got a good way going for us. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any others?
I just wanted to, I just want to stop and recognize that we are competing with everybody, educational and noneducational, for CDL drivers right now. I just want to recognize and applaud the synergy that I'm seeing here to try to handle the problem, and also to recognize that unlike many openings, you can only be on one bus at one time. We can't be, but so creative with that, you know. It becomes physics after a while. So, I just thank you for what you're doing on behalf of these parents that are, you know, looking for their kids to be picked up in the mornings, and I know it's hard to sometimes be told that we don't, we can't be there on time, but I know you're doing everything you can, and I just, I'm amazed. I'm amazed that we have come this far in such a short time, so thank you.
Thank you for sharing that.
So, again, I'd like to echo those sentiments. I'd like to thank Dr. Bowers because he has come and hit the ground running and trying to, one of the things that we've assigned him with is to look at our processes. Where can we be better? How can we be more efficient? Where can we get more return on investment? So, I thank him for that work. I'd also like to cite Art Whitaker, our Director of Transportation, because he does work tirelessly to make sure we fill these positions. And then lastly, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank, I didn't thank Mr. Legrand for all the hard work that he has done over the last two months because he's handled dual roles in several different capacities without complaint, has done a great job. So, again, exemplifies the teamwork that takes place here at Cabarrus County from the Board on down to the Cabinet, to the employers, to all of our staff. So, I thank everyone involved. So, thank you, Dr. Bowers. I'd also like to correct an earlier statement. It's not Winkler Middle School this weekend. You all can go to Winkler, but I'll be at Roberta Road. So, I tried, I tried, I tried. So, our planning session will start at 8:00 Saturday morning at Roberta Road Middle School, for anyone that's interested in attending that. Also, January 23rd, next Monday, is the Staff Development Day. There'll be no school for students next Monday, so please keep that in mind as well. With that, I also would like to take a moment. Amy Jewell is going to come up from our Student Services and talk to us about our student wellness and some of the things that we do here in Cabarrus County to address student wellness and the mental health updates. As you all know, it's something that we're very focused on here in the district and something our students and our community continues to battle with as we, as we come back into school full-time and understand a lot of these issues with our students. So, I've asked Amy Jewell, the Director of our Student Family Support, to come up this evening and present to the Board kind of the happenings that are taking place in her department. If there are any questions, you can feel free to ask Amy at the end of that. Ms. Jewell?
Good evening, Board members. Thank you for having me, first of all, to talk about this extremely important topic. So, I'm going to provide you with a high-level overview of some of the services that we have in the district, and then happy to answer any questions you may have as well. So, I first want to bring your attention back to our Social, Emotional Learning and School Mental Health Improvement Plan. This is part of state policy, SHLT003. We are in the second year of this five-year implementation, and so I have the components here to share with you, and so we're really going to focus on those things this evening. And the whole idea here is that the state really recognizes the need for all school districts throughout the state to really focus on universal supplemental and intensive supports for our students. So, first, what are we seeing in schools? We're seeing a lack of healthy coping when there are issues going on. We're seeing heightened rates of depression, I would say, especially coming back from kids being at home all the time and families experiencing a lot of loss. Anxiety, a lot of crises, a lot of crises that is now a very large part of the work of myself, John Basleys, and Amy Louder, and an increase in mental health hospitalizations. But we are also seeing an extremely amazing amount of resilience in our students, in our parents, in their natural supports. We are seeing a higher level of self-reporting, meaning that students are asking for help, and their friends are going to their counselor, social worker, psychologist, admin, any trusted adult in the building to say, hey, so-and-so is not feeling great. They said this thing to me. I'd really like for you to check on them. And that is happening more and more, and we commend our kids for that, as well as our parents. A lot of advocacy, advocacy to talk about mental health for services, for open-minded and open-hearted discussions, and see something, say something. So, not only, you know, the app that we use, we have this anonymous reporting app, but our students are speaking up, not just for our friends, like I mentioned before, but what they see in the community, any concerns that they may have. It is becoming a more natural part of the discussion, and that is extremely helpful when you're trying to address the needs of students and their families, right? And then engagement in treatment. We'll talk a little bit about some of the treatment options that we have. Students are asking to talk to somebody, and parents are consenting, and they're part of treatment, and that is huge. That gives us an opportunity to really partner with families in the best interest of their students' mental health and well-being. So, we'll start with intervention, and then I'm going to sort of work our way back. So, for intervention measures, we have school mental health teams at every school, also known as specialized instructional support personnel, also known as CISP. You can take your pick. I tend to refer to them as CISP, but these are all trained school mental health professionals, and that's your school social worker, counselor, and psychologist. Everything that they do on campus, it's brief and solution-focused in nature, meaning if we have students who are experiencing any unwanted emotions, grief, loss, anxiety, just want to talk to somebody, our staff are trained to encounter that student, support them, and then provide them with techniques to be able to hopefully return back to class in a healthy way, or see them for, you know, maybe six weeks, small little sessions at a time, to try to address those needs. They're also all trained in crisis response protocols, so that is part of our onboarding process. So, every school psychologist, counselor, and social worker in the district receive the same training here for suicidal ideation. So, if we have a student who is expressing any thoughts of suicide, or self-injury, and then, of course, a behavioral threat. So, they work in teams on any of these to make sure that we are addressing the student needs, that there is a consistent practice, intervention, and wraparound support throughout the district. And then, our, these teams at their schools are also meeting regularly, just those professions, to have wraparound discussions, meaning, okay, so if Amy Jewell comes because she just experienced a loss in her family, and we're noticing that she's, her grades are dropping, or she's not coming to school, then everybody on that CISP team should have an action item, like a who does what by when. So, we're making sure that, one, we're not crossing into each other and redoing each other's work, but that everybody has an intention of how we're going to help that student, and we come back together to see engaged progress. We also refer to an outside treatment provider network, which I'll talk a little bit more about on the next slide, and those are for higher levels of service. And just like they're all trained in our crisis protocols, they're also trained in trauma-informed schools and resiliency-focused models for all their intervention practices. So, as I mentioned before, we have this provider treatment network outside of school. So, if our students are going to see our mental health teams at the school, and we've seen them for a few weeks, but we don't see outcomes improving or symptoms reducing, we work with the parents to say, hey, what about a more intensive level of support? So, we cannot do like intensive therapy as school professionals, but we have really good partners that can. They can come in. We can provide a confidential space. They can work with the families. We can refer out. And so, currently, as of today, we have 22 agencies that work within Cabarrus County to provide school-based services to our students across the district. We also have some limited grant funding for therapeutic services, and so that is about four different provider agencies, and that will provide services to any student who is uninsured, underinsured. It will also pay for some higher levels of support if indicated. And then, as part of that memorandum of agreement that I mentioned here, for the provider, so the therapeutic agency that's providing service, for every 10 students across the county that they can bill through insurance, because that's taken care of outside of school personnel, they agree to provide pro bono services to at least one student. And so, that is just another way that we try to catch the students who are either uninsured or underinsured. Also, part of that agreement is that they consult with our CISP and our admin to support our students. We don't ask the intensive details of what's going on in treatment, but what we want to know is, do they have recommendations so we can support our students in school? Can you let us know if there are any triggers that we can avoid, and what are the best ways to de-escalate our students, things like that? And then, in some cases, we'll also provide some professional development when asked. And we'll take it one level higher with some of these intensive supports. So, we have two day treatment programs in our school. And day treatment is the highest level of mental health service students can receive, really in the community or in a school setting, before a family may have to look at something like out-of-home placement or residential. And so, we're really lucky here that we have a partnership with Turning Point Family Services, where they provide all of the treatment within two of our school buildings, where we provide the educational services. So, the kids who need it most, both mental health and academic support, they can receive those together. So, one, they're not missing school, but also they're not missing treatment. And then, of course, in crisis situations, we also have an agreement with Day Marker Mobile Engagement. Some of you may have heard it as mobile crisis, as far as immediate crisis response. So, if we have a student who is in imminent danger and we need some additional assistance, we'll call mobile crisis. So, that's sort of the intervention picture. I want to back up and talk about the prevention that we actually get to focus on a bit more this year, which is great, because if we can really put some effort into prevention measures, that universal support for our students, then maybe we can avoid some of that higher-level crisis, right? So, this year, we got sort of with a positivity project, and again, this is part of our state mental health improvement plan, and this is our universal social-emotional learning, and it is highly focused on building character strengths, fostering healthy relationships, conflict resolution. Teachers are providing these lessons in classroom, and then they're supported by CISP. So, if I'm providing a 15-minute lesson on, I don't know, whatever strength you want to pick, whatever protective factor is going on with me, something that I can identify that gives me a lot of strength, something that I'm proud of, something that I want to share, and I'm sharing that in class, and I'm going through this lesson. If there's anything that comes up for a student, CISP are aware of all the lessons, and they have supplemental supports in case a teacher needs to refer out for something a little bit more individualized. And the feedback here has been pretty amazing. I know Ms. McLean had presented some information on it previously, but the kids really get to take pride in identifying some really good stuff that's going on with them, and it kind of shifts their focus a little bit. And ultimately, if you think about it, if they can focus on these strengths and these exercises that really build and foster resilience, we are helping them identify their own protective factors to potentially... factors to potentially protect them from some at-risk things going on later in life. In addition, this year, we had the Student Wellness Survey that is through our Panorama platform, and here you have the seven areas that we ask our students about. And the reason this is really important is this is student voice. This is students, this is not anybody else's view of the student, or what I think should be going on with the student, or what I read on paper, is an opportunity for our students to truly tell us how they're feeling. So we can look at that data and say, hey, who might need a little bit of support but was afraid to ask, or didn't know who to ask, or wasn't sure how to have the conversation. And so with the Student Wellness Survey, we had one administration of it in the fall, and then schools looked at all their data, and Panorama provides these evidence-based intervention options for students who may need them most. And so right now, we're working on the intervention phase, and then in March, we'll do a second administration of the survey. And the goal there is that if we put these interventions into place for students who truly need them, are the results going to be better? Are there going to be more strength-based, more positive feelings? And if so, that's fantastic, right? And if not, we have more work to do with those kids right there. And then the last prevention measure I will mention is the Student Risk Screening Scale. So as the Student Wellness Survey provided us with the student voice, this is teacher voice. And so they are now providing some input on things that they might be seeing that's going on with students behaviorally. That could be internalizing, so even though I might not be acting out in class, maybe I'm having a lot of anxiety, or I'm sleeping, or there's just something going on that is, you know, not sitting well. So it's a teacher's opportunity to provide their input as well. So between those three prevention measures, it gives us more of a holistic picture of what is going on with our kids, to have these conversations about how to help them more, outreach parents, for you need families, try to improve outcomes for our kids. And now, we have our mental health database, which I cannot say thank you enough to our Accountability Department for working so hard on this. So we got our mental health data analyst a year ago in August. We spent the year developing all these domains, because we have so much anecdotal stuff, right? We talk about mental health all the time, and we talk about hospitalizations, but in order to truly advocate and really get a hard look at where do our resources need to go, what is going on in our county, we have to track what those things are. And so we developed this over a year, we provided technical training on it August through September, and then data collection, I'm sorry, through August, and data collection began in September. And we collect the data in these domains here listed on the left, so all very specific direct mental health domains. And so to date, and this is just September, October, November, December, 4,649 students received direct mental health services through their CISP teams. And the most frequent of those are individual counseling, group counseling, and parent So we're going to use that data, right? We're going to use it to advocate, to see where our resources need to go, to, you know, always ask for more resources and things like that, but it's also to inform our services. So if we can really understand what's going on with our students and what the needs are, where are all these crises, we have an obligation, right? We have a duty to truly train our CISP so that they can encounter our students at their best, at their worst, whatever is going on that day. So here are some of the few mental health trainings that all of our CISP get throughout the year, year after year. Some of it is onboarding, some of it is grant-funded. And I also want to say thank you to the Health Alliance. They have partnered with us through a lot of grants to managers to give training to our folks at no cost to the district. And so that's just been an amazing blessing to be able to do that. So Prepare, that's our school crisis model, Reconnect, QPR, which is suicide prevention, trauma, grief and loss, and of course, ethics. And then, last but not least, I just want to say, I am humbled and proud of the work, the collaborative work that we do here, but the school district cannot address all of these things alone. And so I do just want to highlight some of the collaborative efforts that we are privileged to be a part of, to have a voice at the table, to help us advocate. The Mental Health Advisory Board, which I am honored to be a part of. I mean, this county really, truly recognizes the need, and they advocate, and they want to have these discussions and improve services for our students, our kids, and our families throughout the county. System of Care, Child Protection and Fatality Team, there's Mental Health Task Force, which is another division of the Advisory Board, people who kind of take these action items and bring them to fruition throughout the county. Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, School Health Advisory Committee. John Basleys facilitates that, and the main focus there is really mental health and substance use and other school health-related issues. And then, of course, the Regional and State Mental Health Initiatives, which is where the plan developed. So that was a lot that I threw at you, I know. So I'll pause. Do y'all have any questions?
I just want to make a comment. I know that what you do is hard work, and to see that in three months, you served almost 5,000 students, that's a lot. So I just appreciate what you're doing and your teams, and how you continue to look for answers outside of our school system, and it's really, it's exciting to see that we have other resources that we can pull from in the community. So I just applaud you for what you're doing for our students.
Thank you. We have great people, so I just get to talk about it.
I have a question. So thanks for the presentation and just making us aware of what's happening around our students. There is a support network there that they can tap into. I just really want to encourage students to talk to somebody, to say something. To not be okay is okay, and you can tell anybody that, and I feel that now that you have explained what services are available to our students. One of the questions I have is about the grant funding. Can you just give me a little bit more information, like, how does somebody apply for that? Where do they go to? What does it look like? What types of services they could tap into?
Sure. So they don't have to worry about where to apply. So we train our folks, and we basically hold the grant here and work with the providers who went through an RFP process at the beginning of the grant funding, which is now we're in the second year of that. And so it could be for any school-based service, really. So you're talking about outpatient group. We've had a couple of day treatment students being funded through there. And then, you know, we take into account the individual needs of the family, so if it is an issue that's pouring into school, right, so we have school-based mental health for the family also needs support, we work through them. But the referral process is the exact same for students and families. It's us on the backend who will work the grant funding with the providers who are contracted.
And so we get this grant funding every year. We apply for, like, how does, and I guess my question, let me just ask my question. What do you need to continue to support our, because mental health is real, and our students are vastly affected by it, and I don't think we pay enough attention. I'm not saying the district, I'm just talking about as a whole, people as a whole. There's this big label on mental health, and I just want people to know it's okay to not be okay. So what do you need in order to, and I know you're going to say money and all that stuff, but I'm, seriously, how do you continue to support students by receiving what you need?
Sure, and that's a great question, and I wish I had one specific answer. So what I can say is, this specific grant funding that we're talking about came out of ESER and school safety funds because, for school mental health, direct services. And so, you know, I don't know. Hopefully, there will be more, right, as legislation gets passed and things come down from the state. But I think advocacy numbers showing the need. Our district is incredibly supportive. Our cabinet has been amazing. The county's been phenomenal, trying to support these supplemental services. So I don't know, Ms. Sanders, I don't think I have a perfect answer, but I would love to do some research on it and have some more conversation with you about it.
Thank you, Gane.
Sure.
Thank you for the presentation. So I have a question regarding the information that you guys gather from this survey. How is that presented to parents when these surveys are done in the classrooms? And then, where does that information go? Who has access to that information? How are parents notified with this? If you could just kind of go into a little bit detail about how that works.
Sure. So for the Student Wellness Survey? Okay. So the questions are shared out with families before the students take them, and then the survey results are held in a secure platform, so they're not accessible, like, through the CCS system or anything else, they're in a secure Panorama system. And the result, as schools are going through them, just like anything else, if there's any flags in our meeting with students, and we recognize a need for additional support, there will be outreach to the parent to discuss what that would look like.
Now, do parents have the option to opt out of this for their children?
So this is, there's not an opt-out for the Panorama, because it is part of our suicide prevention grant, it's part of our state mental health plan. However, if students are in front of the survey and they don't want to take it, there is certainly no penalty, no one's going to force the child to take a survey.
Do you think that the data that you collect could potentially be skewed because of the answers that some students may pick that don't want to take this survey?
I think that's possible for any tool that we would use, but that's why we check in with students. So if I were to take the survey and there were a bunch of flags on my answers, right, then it's not going to be an immediate call to my parents, it's going to be a conversation with me to see what's going on with the survey. Here, I noticed some things, and it could be, hey, I had a really bad day, or I didn't take the survey seriously, or it could be that there's some stuff going on. And so, again, the data is one part of looking at all of the data for the whole child, and so there wouldn't be anything reactive just on the one piece of data.
And, sorry, just one more question. So you said the Panorama database. Who has access to that? How long does that stay in that database? Where does that go?
Sure. So it's held securely there, and then at the district level, there's district level, there's school level, there's teacher access. So I suppose it depends on what part you're looking at.
Yeah, I'm just curious, because, I mean, I've talked to other parents that are, you know, concerned about the surveys that are being given out at school. So I just wondered, as far as the data was concerned, who is going to have access to that currently or in the future? How long is that going to stay in there for the student? Is it going to follow them throughout their entire student?
No. So it doesn't stay part of, like, their cumulative record or anything like that. And if you want, Ms. Blackwell, I have a lot of information written out about all the privacy and where it's kept and all of that, so if you'd like, I could send that to you, and maybe that would help a little bit.
That would be great. Yep, thank you.
You got it.
Thank you so much. Prevention's really hard to measure, so it's difficult to know how great of a job you guys are actually doing, so I'm excited that you're collecting data. But for parents out there that are concerned about crises that happen, not maybe to their own student, but in a school, how does it work when, I know, response teams come in? How long are they available? How do kids access it? And if a parent is concerned about their own student, how can they notify the school that they need access to these services?
So those are all great questions, and there's not necessarily one example I can give you. I would say we take any crisis like that where we would send a school team in on an individual basis, and so you sort of have to measure the breadth of what happened, who's been impacted. And so we will set up some mental health triage, we will prepare communication, but we also need to respect the wishes of any parents who might be involved, directly involved with the crisis. And so we communicate per their wishes, potentially. And then, if it is like a high level of support that's needed, we will send communication out for usually the principal or teachers to share with their students. We could push into classrooms. We provide also just resources that we'll send home in an event of a crisis where how they can access, there's just people, extra counselors who might be on campus, and then like emergency resources. So any district level or large school-level crisis, if we push into, we'll make sure that, one, every student there has access to services, and that every parent who needs to know is made aware. Sometimes, it's hard if we don't have all the information right up front, and I think in any situation, we're just limited in the information we can share, and so we just focus on, you know, who is impacted, what are some of the protective factors that they have? Do they have someone to talk to outside of the school building? Because I think, you know, research shows just one, right? One healthy, supportive, connected adult in the child's life makes a huge difference. So I think no matter what the response level is, that's really our role there, is to make sure that each child who's impacted feels supported and knows where to go.
So even if the event occurred, and it was last week, but maybe a month from now, I'm seeing signs in my child that they're still thinking about it, they're still concerned about it, they have anxiety and depression, they can still access services, just because the crisis team's not, we sent out the email, it wasn't yesterday, but they can still use it.
Correct, absolutely, 100%. And that would be very normal. We usually provide additional support onsite, just for like that day, potentially some days following, until things sort of settle. But we know in mental health that a lot of students, parents, families will experience a delayed reaction depending on what happens. So that level of support, we can always provide to a student. It might not be, you know, 10 extra counselors on campus, but what we would provide, the referrals that we would make, the checking-in sessions, anything like that, that can be accessed anytime a student needs it.
Thank you, Ms. Jewell, I appreciate it. I'd also like to thank our counselors, the social workers, all the CISP teams, and again, our teachers for all the extraordinary work that they do in helping our students continue to push forward and to handle a lot of these serious issues that we're dealing with on a daily basis. I can tell you that the information that Ms. Jewell shared with you this evening has made us a stronger district. I know there's a lot of questions around surveys and things of that nature, but the resources that we're using is definitely giving us good insight to some of the problems that our kids are dealing with, and helping us become a stronger, more efficient district. And to what Ms. Sanders said, I agree. If there is an issue and anyone is dealing with it out there, especially with a child, call us. We have the capability, at the very least, to get you aligned with the appropriate professional help that you may need. So use us as a resource, use us as an advocate for you to help you, but do reach out, and as Ms. Sanders did say, it is not okay to be not okay, and it's okay to reach out for us to help you. We want to make sure that we're doing all we can to provide those services to our students, so I do thank you. Then lastly, for me, I just want to acknowledge the Boy Scouts I see in the room this evening. Appreciate you being here tonight. Exemplifies your leadership and your young careers, and it's nice to see you here and partake in a public meeting and continuing to work forward on the accomplishments that the Boy Scouts give you to do on a continuous basis. So thank you for being here this evening, and I applaud your young leadership, so thank you.
Okay, we will move to 6.03, Board Attorney Comments. Mr. White. Welcome, Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Board members, one of the things that y'all needed to, or wanted to bring y'all's attention is, the new session came in, the long session started in Raleigh, that started on January the 11th. Everybody was sworn in at that point in time, and that each one of, the Speaker of the House made comments being supportive of education, as well as the Speaker, or Pro Tem, Mr. Senator Berger. If y'all want committee assignments that are specifically located, specific for the education, I can email that out to you, along with their emails, if y'all want to be able to reach out to them. Do want to tell you that one of the things that has happened is that a new state health plan administrator has been identified, and that is Aetna. They won a contract that is starting in January of 2025. Now, the reason why that's potentially important is that involves teachers and also state employees, but it would include teachers. It's a three-year initial service between January 1, 2025, through December the 31st, 2027, and that that is replacing, Aetna is replacing Blue Cross Blue Shield of North Carolina. Blue Cross Blue Shield of North Carolina has served the employees, as well as teachers, for the past 40 years. The idea is that, what the statement is, it's going to be savings of about $140 million in cost savings over the five years, and that Aetna has made statements that they have cross-checked the current doctors in the network for Blue Cross Blue Shield, and 98% of them are also in network for Aetna, and that they're stated that they're trying to work to increase in the in-network doctors so that people will not have a change in providers. The plan members, our teachers, or y'all's teachers, will start receiving information regarding the change in 2024, prior to the open enrollment for 2025 benefit year. And then also, the North Carolina School Board Association, they have a legislative agenda, one of the things that has been placed on that, that's important for, I wanted to bring y'all's attention, is school safety, and the idea of providing adequate funding to hire school resource officers, school counselors, and school social workers, and providing training and equipment that is needed. There's also a budget request, there's going to be a budget request for $5 million in reoccurring funds for school psychologist internship program, $10 million in recurring funds for master level for school social workers, $100 million in recurring funds for school nurse and school social worker application program, $5 million in reoccurring funds to eliminate student co-pay for reduced-priced meals, and then there's also some needs-based capital grants. there's also some needs-based capital grants and the school safety grant. They're asking for a total of $41.7 million. There's also another thing that's on a hot topic, or at least a topic to be aware of, is teacher licensure and salary model, and the idea is to, this needs to have some statutory changes. I did not want to bore you with the statutory potential changes, that has not made it into a bill yet, but the idea there is to pilot some programs that is going to expect to raise teacher salaries, and that is something that is going to be discussed in the long session. Since this has just started, as legislation is introduced, we're going to try and highlight some of the legislation. If there is something that you want us to drill down a little bit farther, then we'll certainly drill down on that. But the idea is to give you more of an overview, is this coming down the pipe? This is what's being said? This is what's going on? It will not be exhaustive because we don't want to be, y'all don't want to be here all night, but I'll try and, we'll try and point out some of the more hot topics that y'all can think about and know about to get behind if that's something that y'all need or if you need to drill down on it. So, anything else?
Any discussion?
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Okay, board members, we'll move to 7.01, our guest speakers address the board. So it is now time for public comment. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to speak, and an individual speaking for a group may be allowed up to five minutes at the discretion of the board chair to express interest and concerns related to the official business of the board and the school district. The speakers will be called in order in which we receive the request. A person may not be substituted for a speaker, nor may one speaker donate time to another speaker. If a speaker runs out of time, then the speaker may leave the additional information with our board clerk. Statements reasonably perceived to be disruptive or eminently threatening to the orderly operation of this meeting shall not be permitted. Any limitation on public comment shall be viewpoint neutral. The board chair has the authority to rule the speaker out of order. If a speaker or attendee willfully interrupts, disrupts, or disturbs this meeting and refuses to leave after being asked by the board chair, then the speaker may be escorted out and could be arrested for trespassing or disrupting an official meeting. Board members will not respond to individuals who address the board except to request clarification of points that are made by the presenter. So we will go in order, and we will have first Mr. Paul Wannish.
Good evening. This isn't the way I expected to sound. Kelly, thank you for passing it out. I need glasses. Age. Good evening, school board members. Excuse me. Good evening, school board members and Dr. Kopecky. I'm proud of CCS Program Choice and AIG. I feel there's an insufficient transportation offering. Most family units are at risk of not being able to take advantage of these programs. Ten situations listed on the first page, and I suspect we all know a single mom or a family with both parents working. I'll be able to go over all of them with you after my three minutes. Transportation is a real issue. One in three students don't get transportation on the bus. The following pages split the district into 40 different zones, and then the maps are color-coded with gray where transportation would always be offered. Going to the next page. Starting with elementary school, the common Cabarrus format. Top left has all the zones in the elementary level. Top center is the core curriculum coverage, followed by Program Choice curriculum coverage without ops. Middle school is, middle schools cause a big problem. The zones for the same curriculum don't align with elementary. J&amp;Fries doesn't offer core curriculum. J&amp;Fries now also picks up from developments in the surrounding area in Concord, the Concord Middle Zone. For STEM, breaking the zone model is important. On December 19th, I requested the same development pickups for Northwest Cabarrus Middle School for STEM for Harris Middle Zone, cutting travel time in half for what they would normally need to get to J&amp;Fries. Also pickups from developments would be very logical. Today we see 20 people, we saw 20 people picked up from one stop on Ellenwood Road. So from school property is, so picking it up from school property is somewhat irrelevant. The next two pages are for high schools. Again, it's core performance learning. And, that was three minutes? What? Thank you. They have plenty in high schools, but then they have some zones that don't have any coverage. Three zones that have everything that they could want. Going on to CMS School Choice models. They got the idea right, four times as large, four times the budget for transportation, but they have everybody transported into the zone that they fit into. Breaking them into 40 zones is just not logical. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd just like to request clarification. Is there any way you can send us your notes or what you were reading from so that I can, because I couldn't hardly understand because your voice, something's wrong. I'm sorry, but...
I know.
Is there any way you can send us?
I will send it to Kelly.
Okay, thank you. I had this, but just your notes.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So Keisha, what Mr. Wannish is trying to say, I believe, if I'm correct, I don't want to put words in your mouth or belabor this longer, but basically our hub stop system is not working efficiently and it's not equitably serving all of our students. We are aware of that. We just recently talked with our Program Choice Coordinator, Mrs. Carla Black, who has done an extensive overview of our Program Choice model. And as we start to enter down the road of our realignment process, this is one of the things we're going to look at to make sure that we are more efficient, we are more equitable, because a lot of our underrepresented population do not have the ability or the capability to get on the, to get to these hub stops. If you can get transportation to get there, you can get there, but it's not serving all of our kids in an equitable fashion. So I appreciate you coming and speaking to us this evening, and I do understand, even though you're struggling with your voice, what you're trying to say, and I can assure you that we are going to look at this. Now, I'm going to say that we're not going to fix this problem this current school year, but I think over the next 12 months that we will have an answer that makes us much more equitable, more efficient for all kids to be able to participate in the Program Choice model, that our hub stops will become much more improved than what it is and much more efficient than it is right now. So I thank you for your time and for bringing this to our attention.
Can we allow, we can allow the public to be involved in that process? So if he's interested in being part of that?
If we, if we should seek committee, committee members or public input, I will definitely reach out to Mr. Wannish. I would be interested in seeing some of the information you share, but I can tell you that this is something that we are definitely on top of and aware of, and I appreciate you speaking to us this evening. You can call me when you feel better, we can talk, and we can sit down and have a conversation.
I'm going to arrange for three minutes next time to go over ethnicity breakdowns.
Sure.
So which zones do not have coverage and don't have any real transportation?
I welcome that, and I welcome you to the meetings, but I can tell you that we are well aware of this and you're spot on. Thank you.
Thanks for explaining that. Okay, we'll move to our second speaker, Reverend Jordan. Is Reverend Jordan in the room? Okay, we'll move to our third speaker, Caleb Edinburgh. Welcome.
Thank you.
Are you representing the group?
I am.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. I hope you're all well. My name is Caleb Edinburgh, Chair of the Cabarrus County Teenage Republicans, and I am a freshman at Mount Pleasant High. My reason for coming before the board to speak today can be highly contentious, but it is of the utmost importance. In November, Cabarrus County elected two new members to our board, and I wanted to ensure that these two new members understand how important it is that we take steps to protect Today, I'm talking specifically about the kind of books available to students through school media centers. I personally went through a list of 17 extremely inappropriate books, hoping and praying that I wouldn't find any of them in Cabarrus County schools. At West Cabarrus High School alone, I found 13. Of the 17 books, only two were not present in any Cabarrus County school. That doesn't even take into account the possible thousands of inappropriate books in teachers' personal classroom libraries. This is incredibly troubling, to say the least, and I found through reading several reviews on every one of these 17 books and reading a few of them myself, that not all of them, that every one of these books, excuse me, contains graphic sexual content. Whether this is graphic depictions of sexual assault, extremely drawn-out sequences of graphic sex, or other depictions of unsuitable content, these books don't need to be in schools. The board needs to revise their policies so that if a book is removed from one school, it will be removed from all. The board also needs the unilateral authority to place books under mandatory review. There are numerous examples of our current policy being inefficient and outdated, and represents greatly different treatment of the same books at different schools. I understand that some of you ran on keeping this policy the same or even further weakening it, but the vast majority of Cabarrus County voters don't think that these books should be in schools. I hope you'll do what's right for all of us students and revise school board policy to where books like these are never even considered for placement in the school media centers. I'm willing to stand firmly behind any member who chooses common sense and decency over idiocy and hypocrisy. If parents want their children to read about how to perform sex acts, then they can find themselves, they can find them elsewhere outside of the school system. Some people believe the kids should be allowed to view this graphic content even against parents' wishes. They're wrong. I'll pose a rhetorical question to you this evening. How would you feel if your child came home one day from school and told you that they were recommended a book that contains a three-page-long sex scene describing everything in graphic detail? If you're a reasonable person, you'd be extremely concerned. We need a system that protects kids, not exposes them to X-rated content. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, board members, we will move to 8.01 with our committee reports, and I'm going to start with Ms. Escobar. I know she has some new board, student interns, and some exiting student interns.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I have been assigned to the Committee for Interns, and I want to congratulate three of our interns who've completed a semester with us, and so I'm going to come down to the podium down here. Kendall? I just want to say thank you for your service to your, and commitment to the school district. I know that you've learned a lot over this last semester, thanks to our chair, and I want to wish you best of luck in your senior year. It's not over yet. You still have to keep on working. And then I want to introduce the two new interns that are going to be working with us this semester and shadowing the board and the school district, Vandana Pedipali And are you ladies prepared to just introduce yourselves, what schools you're in? Okay. You can have your things.
Good evening. My name is Vandana, but I go by Ipsy. I'm a 12th grade student at Coxmo High School, and I just want to say that I'm happy to be here, and I joined the Board of Education internship program because I'm excited to learn more about administrative work and leadership skills for college. So thank you.
Hi, I'm Ally Bogar. I'm 17, and I'm a senior at Hickory Ridge. I joined the Board of Education because I really wanted to learn how local government operates and how to have respectful, controversial discussions.
Well, thank you, ladies. I want to thank them for signing up and showing their commitment, and I hope that you learn everything that you're hoping to learn in this next semester. I just wanted to also add, Madam Chair, that I attended the VEX Robotics tournament that happened at JM Robinson High School on Saturday, and I just want to congratulate them for hosting this tournament for their 10th year. There were 40 middle and high school VEX teams throughout North Carolina that were there on Saturday, and everyone there was trying to qualify for the state championships, which will be on March 4th, which will also be at JM Robinson High School. And I want to congratulate Coxmo High School for being a tournament finalist, and also Northwest Cabarrus High School, who was awarded the judges award.
Okay, I'd like to ask Mr. Treadaway, he's going to talk about the committees, the board committees.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Already this morning, or this evening, we've seen what great things are happening in Cabarrus County schools, but we know that the magic starts in the classroom. That's where it really starts. And you mentioned our visitation teams. I'm hoping to work through Dr. Kopecky's office and Ms. Williams to work a possible schedule so that we can get into some of those schools to see the magic happen firsthand, to be proximate. We want to make sure that we schedule this so that it's not disruptive. We know teaching is a challenge without third parties coming in and being disruptive, so we don't want to do that. And we also know that board members have busy schedules. It's not going to be a schedule where everybody can be at each one of those visits, but I look forward to sending some of those dates out to the board members soon, and so that we can see that magic happen firsthand.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that has anything as far as committees? Okay, thank you. Well, we'll move to 8.02, our construction update with Mr. Brian Cone. Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Kopecky. Going to go over a handful of updates for you on the construction activities taking place within the district since December of last year. So we'll start with Arbrown McAllister Elementary School. I'll show you these two slides just to give you a little bit of context as we go through these updates over the next several months. We kind of alphabetize our buildings in sections because they are so large. This slide is representative of the two main, the main level and the upper level of the school, and you can see there's an A section, a B section, and a C section. Again, we have main level and we have upper level. So as we go through the updates, a lot of times I'll give you Area A or Area C, activities that are taking place, and this is just to help give you some context as to what areas we're actually are talking about. And certainly if you have any questions as we're discussing them, feel free to ask, and I can explain a little bit more in detail. So since December last year, we've continued some undercut, kind of proactive undercut in Area A, which is the main, where the main mechanical room, the main electrical room, the pump and boiler room. These were proactive measures we took on as a part of the project that weren't necessarily required. The contractor is obviously obligated to get down to subgrade, but we identified some really, really hard soil because this was in one of the largest cuts on the site, to the tune of about 28 feet of cut that we had made. So we'd obviously gotten through all the soft dirt, and we were getting down to some really hard stuff. The issue we would have run into is, as our mechanical contractors, our plumbing contractors, our electrical contractors come in and started doing underslab work, they would probably have encountered soils that they would not have been able to remove, so that we would have been charged a premium for what is considered trench rock on this job. So we identified those areas with the project team, with the grading contractor, and while we had mass grading equipment on site, we took the alternative of undercutting these areas about four foot in depth, bringing structural fill back in and compacting it so that it is buildable, plus it'll be digable at that point when those subcontractors come back in. We've also completed all the proof rolls on all the slab on grade areas. That means the entire building has been passed by our geotechnical engineer and is ready for footings and foundation. Sanitary sewer work continues around the site on the private side, so we're getting all our laterals in. all our laterals into where the classroom wings are. These are one of the first activities go in as far as underslab work, so they're working on that. We did have to do some public sanitary sewer work up on McAllister Drive where we impacted the public system. We performed those activities over the holidays due to the fact that we couldn't do it when school was open because it was in the middle of the road. Took about a two-day task for the utility contractor to perform, and the City of Concord was on site while we did it, and there were no issues. We have also began installing site conduits for data and telecom. All of our pathways that go from the school building out to the streets for our reader signs, those have to get installed very early on because they'll start getting stone base and asphalt and areas will get, will cover those areas up that we'll need to be able to put them in. Footing and foundation work, as I said, in Area A is taking place, so they are digging footings. This is, again, where our pump and boiler room is, where our fire riser room is, where the main electrical room is. All those areas have to be completed first because as contractors start coming in and working to their point of termination, that is where it is at. Curb and gutter work continues on the south access road. That's where the buses and school, school nutrition will access the school. In the next couple of weeks, we should see the plumbing and electrical contractors on site to begin all their underground slab work. That gives you kind of an overview of the campus. You can see the activities there in the back where the new school sit in relationship to the existing school. As the contractor concentrates their efforts more on the slab now and the building itself, you can look around the perimeter and start seeing our slopes are stabilized. Can actually start to see a little bit of green vegetation getting established on those slopes. The very north end of that image, you will see the pond way back up there in the corner. That is the main detention pond that obviously has been collecting a substantial amount of water since December and has been frozen for about half of that time. So it's doing what it is supposed to do. The bus parking area is, again, being used as our lay-down yard for all the subcontractors. Curb and gutter in the main staff and visitor lot's about 85% complete, and that's where all the subcontractors and tradesmen will park. The north entrance road for parents, staff, and visitors has the stone base installed. In the next couple of weeks, weather permitting, we should see asphalt binder going down to give us a solid surface entering and exiting the site. The main fire protection line for the fire sprinkler system has been installed on the south entrance road and is being terminated at the building now. And again, I spoke to the, the main detention pond there in the back. That gives you a little bit closer view of the north entrance. This will be where the, the parents, staff, and visitors enter and exit the school. You can kind of see the exit right there. That is the existing exit for Arbrown McAllister, as it is today. That will be incorporated into this new entrance once we make that final connection. And this is the south entrance where buses and school nutrition will enter and exit the site, keeping them completely separated. That is at the intersection of McAllister and Sunnyside. There's a vantage on the dam of the main detention pond on the backside of the site. Gives you a good perspective of the grade differential that we've dealt with on this site and how we're working with it, so. And it is frozen there. Duration on the projects currently set at about 603 days, so we're getting close to be about a third of the way through the project. The drone video, getting ready to see is our January 9th drone aerial update. It's a couple of minutes, but it kind of flies around, gives you a perspective of the site, the adjacent properties and neighbors, so you can get a feel for what we're working with. Main building slab area there in the middle, kind of see the, the outlined footprint of what the building shape will be. I think it's important to note too, you know, you see all the trees, a lot of transparency with the neighbors, but come spring, summer, fall, there'll be no visibility to our neighbors. That'll be where the two playgrounds, kindergarten, first grade, second through fifth playgrounds, and our basketball court will be where the equipment is. Beyond that, it's going to be a large multipurpose field for the school. And those are the two classroom wings there on the very backside of the school that are going to take shape over the next two months. And that's all I had on Arbrown McAllister. Are there any questions before we move on? Nope. All right, so moving on, a quick update on Concord High School, Mount Pleasant High School turf field and track replacement project. We last updated you in December that Mount Pleasant High School was completed with their scope of work, and all we were lacking was the striping for the track at Concord High School, which you can see now has been completed. So that, that project's all but done with some miscellaneous materials that had to be removed and some additional cleanup that the contractor's taking care of for us, but we are 100% done there otherwise.
So have you handled the safety issue going up to the school from the back of, back of the stadium?
Yes, we've, we've repatched and paved those areas.
Just patched or actually fixed?
We just patched them, is all we were able to do, so. All right, quick update on Northwest Cabarrus High School project. Back right before winter break, the project team had met to finalize the building location and the orientation of the school on the site itself. The plan there you see gives us what we call our bar scheme orientation. It allows us the most flexibility and practical use of all the property that we did purchase, utilizing the areas underneath, the power line easements for farming, agriculture, the barn, as well as some additional staff parking and bus parking. This month, we've already begun setting up meetings internally with department staff to identify critical space needs so that the architect can now begin dialing in what that square footage really looks like for this project as a whole. The goal that we're still trying to meet is that by the end of this month, we'll issue our construction manager at risk RFQ to bring that project team on. That will align with the completion of our schematic design with the architects as we roll into design development. We'll have that construction manager be a part of that so they can begin pre-construction exercises with us, identifying cost and price as to what we see this school going to be at. And then we continue having discussions with Cabarrus County as a part of what the funding timeline looks like for this school itself. Any questions?
Actually, I kind of probably wanted to ask you this with Arbrown, so I'm sorry.
I asked if there were any questions.
I know, I know, I'm so sorry. With the redistricting that we're going to be doing, is the plan to have the redistricting done by the time Arbrown opens, or at?
Do you want to take that down?
Sorry.
The intent is that upon completion of the realignment, and what the decisions the Board makes, that we would implement them and time that with the opening of the Arbrown McAllister in September of 2024.
Anything else on Northwest? Cox Mill High School update. So again, we had touched on this last time. There was some money that the county had allowed us to utilize for some internal improvements for traffic movements at Cox Mill High School. Work is about 95% complete. All we have left is some restriping of the bus lots, some directional errors, just to try and do the best we can to help identify where we intend for parents, students, buses to go on that site. You know, we were hoping to get this project completed before winter break or during winter break, so to speak, so that when kids came back, we could make that transition. Weather just did not allow us to do that. We are going to work with Andrew Crook and get some signage put out for him. This is not going to be an easy transition. The school's been there for years, everybody's been driving the same patterns for all those years, and we're going to up and say, okay, you're going to be doing something completely different. So it's going to take a village to get it corrected, and after a couple of weeks, they'll figure it all out. The goal is, after the semester break, Andrew would like to have a couple of weeks to hand out flyers, get connected information out, as much literature as he can to his parents and to his students so that they are aware of what that change is. And at some point in the next week or so, we will establish a transition date of when we will make that change. You know, again, it's, it's essentially given us roughly 2,700 lineal feet of internal queuing on this site versus 600 feet, which is what we have now. We are, fingers crossed that this will take care of almost all of the backup and traffic issues on the north and southbound patterns of Cox Mill Road. This kind of gives you a view of the couple of areas of improvement. We made the 25-foot connector between the current staff lot and the front queuing area of where parents now come into. This allowed us to change that pattern altogether. That section, that slide there to your right shows a new exit for those parents, so they will not be exiting where buses or students are going to be going now. They have their own dedicated exit area. This is the, where the new road that we cut across the front of the school will come across and tie into the existing queuing line that parents use right now. Any questions on Cox Mill? All right, this one, this last one is kind of an informative update for you. It's not necessarily a Cabarrus County school project. For those of you familiar, NCDOT is getting ready to embark on a Union Cemetery Road realignment and Rock Hill Church Road extension. Those of us who've been in this community long enough understand the challenges of that intersection at Union Cemetery, Cabarrus Avenue 29601, and the congestion that it is, and the headache it can be. So this is to alleviate all of those movements and hopefully take care of that problem. It does minimally impact our auxiliary services building to some extent, and that's what this slide is to, to let you know that the county has intentions and is receptive to what NCDOT is asking of them, and I just wanted to bring this to your attention, so if you have any questions, I could certainly take that back to them. This project will not start probably until second quarter '24, and it's at least a two-year project, so it is a ways down the road. But all of this, the transactions for easements and right-of-ways and those sorts of things have to take place right now. Just to try to give you a quick view of what's taking place, I didn't want to put the whole site plan on there because it's very complicated when you look at it, so I took some areas. The image there to your left in yellow, that is a temporary construction easement. So that is temporary, it's not going to be a permanent easement. They're not impacting any of what we have on-site internally, that is essentially in the landscaped area out front of auxiliary services. You can see the aerial photo that I brought in there for you. That row of trees is about all it's going to impact, okay? The slide to your right is at the very south end of the auxiliary services building. That's kind of our bus graveyard, if you want to call it, where the buses go. That red area indicates a permanent utility easement. So that will be permanent, meaning that we're, the county is going to dedicate that to NCDOT for their use. The use, however, is only for guy wires for relocation of a utility pole that has to take place as a part of the alignment. So that is all that it is impacting, the auxiliary services, and I don't really know if you could say it was impacting any. But it's the county's intention to enter into an agreement, and they will be compensated for the temporary easement and for the permanent easement that they will be giving to NCDOT. Again, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have on this. It's a ways down the road. The county still has the rights because of the debt on the auxiliary services building, so it's really a decision at the preference of the commissioners to make, and they have already agreed at their work session to move forward with it. So, any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, that's all.
Okay, Board members, we will move to 8.03, and, and Dr. John Kopicki, our superintendent, will give us the presentation of strategic plan.
Thank you. And for the audience and for, for those, those who are watching, you can watch on the screen as we go through this. Mr. Fur will kind of go along with me as we do it. I'm going to give you a brief overview of what is in this plan, and I would ask that we, if you have any comments, we obviously welcome them, and I would ask you to hold any long questions for Saturday when we have our planning session, we can kind of go over this in more detail. But it begins with the picture you see on the front. Those are our students, and what I would like to say too is, the photo work that you see in here is our photo, our photographer, Mike Martin. He did a fantastic job on this and put all these photos together with Phil Fur and kind of helped collaborate and organize this and put this together. So these are our students and our work, and, and Mike did a great job at highlighting a lot of that work that you'll see this evening. So obviously, the theme we picked was Destination 2025, and that was a lot of work and a lot of conversation, and it was actually Dr. Probst's idea to come up with the destination word and the D25, so we liked that as a team, and we went with that. And the championing all students, each child each day is, comes right from our cultureized book that we are using with Jimmy Cassis, and championing all of our students every day, all students every day, whatever it takes. So kind of a spin-off of that. So that's where the cover comes from. When you open it, you'll see your table of contents. And if you move over to page five, you'll see that we have our, our Board of Directors there, and you'll see our mission, vision, and our core commitments, and our focus is on relationships. Our focus is in making sure that we provide the access, resources, and opportunities for all of our students, and that we focus on the future, and continue to be nimble as a district, so as our students leave the Cabarrus County school system, they're prepared for the college opportunities, their career opportunities, any military opportunities that they may engage upon. If you move over to page six and look at the data there, our numbers help tell our story as we continue to grow, and we discuss them constantly and consistently, and we look at that data as it informs us. But you get a good gist of it. It tells a story of what the district is all about. Forty-five schools, 34,962 students, and some of the, the peripheral data I like to talk about is to understand our district and to, again, to tell our story, is we have over 4,000 employees. 44% of our students are in their free reduced categories, which presents its own challenges. And if you look at, we talk about the work that our faculty and our students and our support staff do on a daily basis. You look at those numbers, it kind of tells a story. We talked a little bit about transportation this evening. There are 1,316 routes to consider. 8,218 stops, 65,260 miles every day, covering 364 square miles with 240 buses. So when we talk about a bus stop or a, navigating a route or, or someone being upset, we understand that, and we want to make sure that we make, we hear everybody's concerns, but I just want to give you that data to share with you. It's an unbelievable task that Art and his team and Dr. Bowers engage on a daily basis to make sure we provide that service to our students. We continue to grow. We have 21 elementary schools, nine middle schools, eight high schools, our K8 Royal Oaks Academy, a virtual school, three early colleges, and two alternative settings. Again, that tells the story. I think it's important for us to understand demographics. What does our district look like and what do our students look like? And I think the breakdown there is pretty telling as to the, the demographics of our student body and our student population, and it's important that we acknowledge and understand that. To give you an idea of the growth, right now we're at 34,962 students, but that only tells the story of the growth and where we are right now. In 2008, we were at 26,190 students. 2010, we were at 27,647 students. 2015, we hit the 30,000 mark with 30,314 students. 2020, we grew to 32,833, to today at 34,962 students. So you look at that growth over a 15-year period, we've grown by 8,772 students, or every five years, we're growing at about 2,924 students. With a projected growth of 1.5%, within 10 years, within that five-to-10-year period, you're probably going to be over the 40,000 student mark in enrollment and growing. So as Mr. Cone gives his presentation this evening and talks about some of the building projects, you can see the reasons, the why, some of the why behind why you're, you're building those schools. If you take a look over on page nine, again, we talk about our points of pride and some of the things that we're, we take a lot of pride in, and one of the things I want to highlight this evening is our CTE programs. We have seven program areas that we focus on, agriculture, education, business, finance, and marketing, career development, computer science and IT, family consumer science, our health sciences, our trade, technology, and engineering education. And you look at that, you look at all the pathways that are in there too. We have 48 CTE pathways, 45 school choice options. Wonderful opportunities for our kids, but as we talked a little bit- Wonderful opportunities for our kids, but as we talked a little bit, we saw this evening with one of our guest speakers, they present different challenges as well, that we have to be sure that we're continuing to move forward to address some of those concerns. We have 81% of our teachers that have five or more years' experience, 33% of them have advanced degrees. Right now, we're in the top 10% in the state of North Carolina in terms of schools when we compare our performance schools with all other schools in the state. Forty-seven percent of our school, our school students earn college credit. Ninety-eight percent of them attend either two, four-year college, go straight to the workforce, or join the military. That is a point of pride. We should be very, should be very good about that, that our students are going on to successful endeavors once they leave here. And then when you look at 20 million, $900,000 in scholarships speaks to the incredible accolades and accomplishments that our students are achieving on a consistent basis, year in and year out. So when you read through that, we're very focused on a student-first approach and championing all students as we continue to push forward and point out some of those points of pride and tell our story. I have to emphasize, this begins with great students, but more importantly, it begins with great parents and community people and the incredible, wonderful teachers that we have working here on a daily basis along with the great support staff that continues to produce outstanding students. Without our teachers and our support staff, none of this gets done. When you look over then at page 10, 11, it gives you a timeline as to how we became to the point we are at today and how we developed this plan. As you recall, not to bore you with a lot of the details, we got here through asking those three main questions. What's going well in our district? What are things that we can improve? And what do we want it to look like in three to five years? And what's the things that we're committed to? We're committed to continuous improvement. That's what, they're two words you'll constantly hear me say. We want to continuously be improvement. We are a very good school district that has a very good, solid foundation. Long before I came here, it was and is a very successful school district. Our goal is continuous improvement. How do we make it better? What do we need to focus on? We asked those three questions of our teachers, again, our faculty and our staff. We asked those of our community. You see some of the pictures there. Many of you, if not all of you, participated in that data gathering. Now, we used the K-12 insight surveys to gather some other data from a quantitative approach. And what we looked at from a thematic approach, what were the key strategic priority areas that kept popping up over and over again that we could focus on moving forward in the future to improve our district? And that then, as you see in the following page, talks a little bit about the case for the future and some of those areas that we're looking to support. As we continue to have high expectations, champion for all students, making sure that we provide, as Amy Jewell said this evening, a merchant for hope by that. What I mean by that is that we make sure that we are developing those relationships with our kids, and every child has someone that they can count on as they pursue their education here in the Cabarrus County School System. And we carry that banner for all those kids as we move forward. As you move on, you'll see the strategic priorities that the themes revealed. They talked about student wellness, teaching and learning, the diverse talent pipeline, early learning, a technology-enhanced learning, and community alignment. They were the six thematic themes that kept coming up over and over again as we unfolded the data and the information that we got from all the stakeholders in our area. So as you move forward on the middle of the 14, the page 15, the middle of the strategic plan, you'll see where we have our goals and our objectives. And what we did is we wanted alignment. We wanted to align our goals, which is the overarching theme on every strategic priority. The goals have to align with the objectives, and the objectives have to align with the initiatives. And I'll talk about the initiatives at the end of this. The success that we're going to measure is going to be through those initiatives, and that's going to be the report card that we report out to the community at the end of each school year to tell you what we have achieved and what we have not achieved. How accurate is this strategic plan? And how much of this strategic plan and these objectives are we accomplishing on a year-in-and-year-out basis? So we will be held accountable to this, and you'll see on each page, you'll see the goals, you'll see the objectives, you'll see the key verbs, talking about the overarching themes and the measures that we're going to look at each year as we move forward. And then we're going to move to tell that story by talking about the key initiatives. And when you look at this on page 17, if you look at the priority two, teaching and learning, we did include some data in here. And this data is, again, to help tell the story. It's neither a negative nor a positive, but it's the data. It's the real story. It's telling the story of where we are right now as a district. It tells some of the achieving areas, it tells some of the story of where we're achieving at high levels. It also tells some of the stories where we need to improve. It also tells the story that there are some groups that we didn't make sure we're focused on in a more equitable fashion because they need more resources than others. And we need to start talking about that and being honest and having those constant conversations about continuous improvement that we're reaching all kids. So we need to know and we need to understand the data to improve upon, and we will do that. And we share some of that data with you. And you look at those graduation rates, I would say they're okay, but we can do a whole lot better, and that's our aim. And I think everyone is on the same page to say we need to improve. You look at the same thing when you look at the end of the grade analysis and the end of course analysis. Again, that's the real data. That's the story. That's factual. But I will say this, that's performance data based on one week, on the assessment that they give at the end of the year, and it doesn't tell all the story. It's a piece to the story. It's an important piece, but it's not the whole piece. And I think that's one of the reasons why you come up with a strategic plan, to talk about all the different objectives that you are trying to achieve through the initiatives that you measure and the metrics that you put in place to measure those objectives. So that you're not measuring your school district by saying, well, we did this on this test, and that's the only thing that we're going to look at. It's only one performance measure. We want to have many measures. We want to tell the whole story of the district, all the things that we're accomplishing as we move forward and provide those access, resource, and opportunities for our students. And then to look at efficiencies and to ensure that we're getting a better return on investment to where we're putting our dollars, is where we're putting our dollars and our money having a good return on investment in terms of all the things that we measure here in this strategic plan. When we look at the diverse talent pipeline, we talk a lot about attrition rates. Well, there's a factual data set right there for you. And attrition rates are tricky. Right now, we are running a little above the state in terms of teachers attritioning out of the Cabarrus County School System. But it's an understanding that that is important. Some of these objectives hopefully will measure that. And what I mean by that is this, what's the reason why? We have an exit survey that asks our teachers, why are you leaving? Are you leaving because you're moving? Are you leaving because you're retiring? Is it a family obligation? Is it a new career opportunity? What's the reason behind that? Understanding that information helps us to plan as we move forward in the future in terms of our hiring protocols and what we need in terms of having a full staff onboard for the following years. We talked a little bit tonight about shortages and how we're improving upon that. Well, having a plan helps you improve upon that. And when you're looking at your talent pipeline, understand those attrition rates. You can then have a better long-term answer to how you plan to fulfilling those positions and getting yourself up to a full staff. So that's some of the objectives you'll see there. Early learning, I will tell you that in Trina Wenzel, our early learning teacher at Mary Frances Wall, you have a diamond in the rough there that is incredible, what she does on a daily basis. And I have had many a conversation with her, and one of our goals is to expand and grow our early learning programs. Right now, we have eight classrooms that serve the North Carolina pre-case. There are two at Boger, two at Rocky River, one at Irving, one at Wyancoff, one at Harrisburg, and one at Bethel. Along with that early learning program that we have at Mary Frances Wall, our goal is to grow that program and bring in more of our preschool enrollment into Cabarrus County so that our preschool students can experience the excellent teachers that we have here and that we can be in contact with those families within those communities to have them here earlier so we can help them sooner and provide a great education for them as they move through our system. So you'll see a lot of, the objectives are focused on that preschool enrollment and increasing that as we move forward through the system. Technology, you know, Mrs. Escobar reported out this evening about the Vex Robotics Program. I was able to attend the Vex Robotics Program myself and observe it with Mr. Walters this weekend at the J.M. Robinson School. And to watch the kids and watch the performance and to see that, that to me is technology. And it's not the contest itself, it's not the robotics that you watch. It's the programming, it's the engineering, it's the collaboration. It's those critical skill sets that our kids learn on a consistent basis while participating in the Vex Robotics Program and why we need to continue to advocate for that program. That's technology in action. That's technology-enhanced learning. That's digital learning. That's building engineers in the classroom. They're going to go out and be successful in Cabarrus County and other places. So when you're driving down the road and you see the Eli buildings going up and you're talking to them about the different positions that they have available, it's important for us to make sure that we have the curriculum available here in our school system as we move forward to support that learning in the classroom with that appropriate technology. So those objectives are geared to that. The other thing that we're starting to have initial conversations on, and I'm sure many of you are seeing, is the artificial intelligence that is out there. We need to kind of be ahead of the curve and make sure that we're talking about artificial intelligence and make sure that we are providing the information that our kids need to adequately use, work, and kind of coexist with the artificial intelligence. There is a, right now, if you're staying in tune with a lot of the current educational trends out there, and I'm brain cramping right now, someone help me, but I forget the G- Chat GPT is out there, and we talk about that often lately, on how kids can just basically get into this Chat GPT, and it will write the paper for you. So it's forcing our teachers, and again, it shows the brilliance of our teachers. It's forcing our teachers to go back into the classroom and be more creative in how they're assessing kids, whether it be in person, whether it be alternative assessments, whether it be things where kids have to do it right there on the spot and forcing them to become better writers, better thinkers, better ways to analyze the information that our teachers are providing them. Working with the AI that's out there, it's a positive, it's not a negative. But we have to make sure that we're ahead of the curve, and we understand how that technology impacts the classroom. So they're just some of the things that we're working on in that area. Then obviously, the last one there is, you're nothing if you're not aligned with your community and you're not talking with your community and building with your community and reaching out to your community. And we talked enough tonight about many different things that we saw. I mentioned the wonderful community event I was able to attend the other day honoring Dr. King. You see this wonderful celebration that we have on the page that is there for you with all of our community there, talking about many of the different things that we're supporting. There are so many different opportunities for us to get involved in and partner with our community, and it takes all of us to do that, and we want to welcome that, embrace that, and build on those partnerships and promote them. You see the picture there of our fire safety program? You know, our kids really can go into that program and walk out of here becoming certified firefighters and work in finding a career in that particular profession. Firefighters save lives. What a noble profession to get engaged into. What a great opportunity for a school system to provide that for kids. So when you talk about, again, measuring what you're doing and what you're successful at, let's not forget all the little things that tell the story of the Cabarrus County School System. It's more than an exam, it's more than a test. There are so many different ways that we're successful. We just have to make sure that we tell that story and tell it well. Then lastly, just, you know, we talked about onward. There are 35,000 students, 45 schools, one destination. That destination is excellence and maintain those high expectations as we continue to renew our vision for our students, continue with the framework for the academics, all the department goals, all the various different things that we do that we're committed to and making sure we have measurable outcomes for our students so that we can talk to that success. And then lastly, but obviously not least, what a great picture at the end of that when you see one of our kids, and they were here this evening representing the Air Force Junior ROTC. What a phenomenal experience for kids to experience. Being able to participate in the Air Force ROTC at the level that our kids participate at. We take it for granted. They come in here every month and they do the collars for us, and they post them, and we sing the National Anthem. But we're encouraging them to become leaders. We're giving them a program to participate in, to become a leader, to grow. Whether you go onto military, whether you go into a career, whatever it may be that your passion is, we're providing that here in the Cabarrus County School System. And all that is done there, when you look at those two pie charts, that's a financial reality of what we do and how we do it here in the Cabarrus County School System. That helps to tell the story as to where the money goes and how we do that on a daily basis. I will say to you that Carol Herd and her staff do a phenomenal job at managing that money, but you got to look at it, and the reality is, when you take it all into consideration, we're operating at about a half a billion dollars in industry. That's a big business to make sure that we're managing all those funds, and Carol and her staff do it well. So again, the intent is to give you a high overview, but to say to you that the goals, the objectives, and the strategic initiatives are in place. And I think Phil is going to show us briefly, this is the, these are the report card that we're going to show out. So very briefly, and I'll go into more detail with the board as we share this out on Saturday. Each initiative, and if you see student wellness, each initiative there, you'll see the code 1.1, you'll see three 1.1s. Every initiative ties back to an objective, ties back to an objective, ties back to the goal. And there's not, there's not an initiative in there that does not tie back to the objective that is mentioned. That was intentional. We want to be able to come back to the board and say, yes, we've successfully accomplished this. This is in progress, or we have not started this yet, or we have failed to get this in place. It's a fluid document. Some things that are on there now may not apply as we get to the end of the year, but we have to be able to tell that story and tell the why behind the successes. Those things are in progress, and perhaps those things that we either didn't get to or failed to get to. And be honest about it and have real conversations. But all of this information came from all the data gathered that we did when we talked with all the community. We talked with the board, we went through the exercises by asking those three questions. And the information that we received and the return on that was incredible. And that is how we kind of built the plan. So in May, when the school runs, we'll come back and talk to the board again and say, here's the report card, here are the initiatives that we've accomplished. The intent then is to take a look at the 23, 24 initiatives, keeping the objectives and the goals the same for three years. And we chose three years because we didn't want to go all too long because one thing I've learned here is Cabarrus County, and as I shared the numbers from 2008 to now, Cabarrus County has changed so dramatically in the last 10 to 15 years. It continues to change. We want to be nimble and adaptive to be able to address any of those things that are changing so that we're not stuck on this particular thing for five or eight years. I don't think it's realistic. But I think a three-year look is pretty good, and I think that we'll be able to achieve many of those initiatives, objectives, and goals that we set. And the nice thing about all this is everyone's going to have a voice as we continue to move forward because we'll come back, report out, ask for input. Over the summer, go to our leadership teams and our teachers. Use again the K-12 insight at the end of the year for some stakeholder input. That surveys our students, parents, and our community, and ask those questions to make sure that we're getting it right and report back out to the board and implement this over the next couple of years. So that's the big 50,000-foot view. Again, I'll be more than happy to drill down with anyone over the weekend into the future. We are going to put this on our website. One of the things that Mr. Fur and his team is, are working on, we're going to, we are going to have a new website sometime between March and June of 2023 coming up. And as we change that over, we're going to put this document, this report card, up there for all the community to see and hold us accountable to the work that we do, that we've either achieved it or we have not. So it's going to be for everyone to kind of look at and be able to go on there and interact with it for the entire community. So I'll end there, and again, I would ask that, we really don't kind of hammer in our questions too much tonight. I'll, just because we could be here forever. But everybody, everybody here, at least on the board and the district level, participated in this because they were all part of the qualitative piece. And if you chose to be, you were part of the quantitative piece we put the survey out. So you had numerous opportunities to participate in this as we drill down to the themes. And as we move forward, if those themes need to change and we need to focus on different things, we certainly will. So that is the strategic plan. That's our Destination 2025 from 2020, 22 to hopefully 2020, 25. And again, I'm going to end by saying, our focus and our goal is to continue to have high expectations, hold people accountable as we focus always on continuous improvement in the school district of Cabarrus County. And I'm grateful and thankful for all those that came before me that helped me to build a, build upon a really strong foundation of a school system. So thank you.
I just want to make sure that folks know our board retreat is open to the public.
I want to make sure people know that the Mr. Fur that Dr. Kapicki keeps speaking about is Phil Fur.
Okay. Thank you. That's really exciting to see this on paper. It's been a long time coming.
Can you say just a word about how the budget process will tie into this as well? Or will it, or is that the plan?
Sure, I think it's a fair question. So the budget process, what we're going to do is, as we develop our budget, most, if not all, these objectives, initiative should be able to point back to the budget supporting those initiatives. So for example, I know one of the things on the student wellness initiative is the positivity project. So how do we fund that? How is that funded? Through either a grant, through either initiative by the board, through a motion? We should be able to point that back to that. When we look at our diverse talent pipeline, we should be able to tie back all the employees to the budget. When you look at the last page, it talks a lot about the amount of money that we spend on salaries and benefits. We should be able to pinpoint, there are these many employees, and we can. We have X amount of employees, these are salaries, the amount of money that are cost. But everything should tie back to the budget, and we should be able to get, be able- should tie back to the budget, and we should be able to get, be able to say to you, here's our return on investment by achieving the strategic initiatives that are in there in the metric at the end of it. So it should all tie back to the budget quite efficiently.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Kapiki. These magazines, are they going to be like at all the schools, or where will these be located?
So the answer is, I'm going to say yes, but I have to talk to my financial advisor first. So the answer is yes. Our intent is to, you have the first copies, we just received a set of copies today. There's an expense to that, I want to talk with, you know, Ms. Herndon, and then get her approval to make sure before we, I want to set a budget to that, so we talk about a budget, we want to tie a budget number back to that. But yes, we are, but we are going to put them at all the schools and put them out for the public to have. I'm not going to sit here and say that we're going to have thousands and thousands, because that is not, it's not realistic, because they are expensive.
Well, and that was, so I found some grammatical error, so I just didn't know how many we had already printed.
Thanks for popping my balloon, I appreciate it.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to make sure how many we already printed, so that we can make sure that they're...
No, we only put in 25 of them, so we're good.
Okay, we're going to move on to 8.04, and we're going to do recruitment and retention with Dr. Marion Bish. Welcome back, Dr. Bish.
Thank you. Dr. Williams is going to present with me tonight. So we're going to present for you, we're going to kind of tag team, and Dr. Williams and I will both be at retreat on Saturday, so that if there are other questions that we can answer for you. And the reason we asked Dr. Kapiki to flip spaces on the agenda is that we built our presentation around what we're doing with the strategic plan, and made more sense for you to see the strategic plan before we started talking about it. So we want to talk about the recruitment, retention, and growth for the Destination 2025. And what we started here with is the objectives straight out of the strategic plan. So these are the four objectives that are in the strategic plan, word for word. So we talk about our, and we're going to spend some time, just briefly, going through each of these, and then looking at what we're doing in each of them for recruitment and retention. So we're going to move through these four things. So first thing we want to do is kind of give everyone a reminder of what we mean by licensed and classified, because you're going to hear those terms a lot. When we talk about licensed employees, we're talking about those people that need a license from North Carolina DPI, teachers, assistant principals, principals, psychologists, social workers, these are the licensed instructional personnel that must go through the process of educational degrees, as well as testing, et cetera, and obtain and maintain a license through DPI. Classified employees do not require licensure, some of these are teacher assistants, facilities, transportation, clerical, hourly employees, and some salaried employees as well, but these are people who do not have a license from DPI.
So I want to start, if you look on the right-hand side of the screen, you'll see that we've attached each of the slides to the objective that it matches, so that you can kind of see what we're working on for each of those objectives. And so four things when we look at recruitment of licensed positions. The first is, we have strong university partnerships, so we're hosting a significant number of student teachers, there'll be 70 of them in the district during second semester. We're recruiting, Ms. McLean is our recruiting specialist here, she's working at in-state and some strategic out-of-state universities. We use last year's data to really drive where we're going this year, to make sure that we have some return on investment there. Ms. McLean's also working diligently on a couple of HBCU partnerships, at Johnson C. Smith and at Fayetteville State, to begin creating a talent pipeline there. And then we also, a bit down the road, have looked at Teacher Cadet, which would be a partnership with our Curriculum and Instruction Department, to kind of build internally, and where that university partnership would sit. Secondly, Ms. McLean, I'm really excited about our TA-to-teacher pathway, so we've partnered with Western Governors University, and done some work with them so far, that involves some significant scholarship money on their side, and then some recruitment on our side. And so those folks will be moving into a licensure program, either to earn a bachelor's degree and then get licensure, or for some of our folks who have bachelor's degrees to just acquire the licensure. But we'll be supporting that out of our HR department, so Ms. McLean is putting together a team of teachers and retired teachers that will be providing support sessions, both online and in person, for our teacher assistants who are moving forward with licensure, and I believe we had 32 folks that signed up for the interest, and I think 16 that are currently working on enrollment, so it's a pretty substantial piece there. The third thing is really looking at non-traditional recruitment, so looking at candidates who didn't come through traditional education programs to go into teaching positions. So for example, we're advertising on an Indeed, we're using Handshake, we're reviewing applicants, so we go through folks who've applied for other positions to see who might have that college degree that we can get for what we call a residency license. And then we're also looking at figuring out which university partners work best with our residency teachers, to make that the easiest pathway to full licensure. And then finally, we have a strong international recruitment effort, so we are working with Participate to recruit teachers, that's our international recruiting agency that we work through, we have a significant number of teachers that are employed in our district this year out of Participate, and we have a teacher in the district who is from Puerto Rico, I know that's not international, but it's not continental United States either, and so we have initiated some conversations with several universities in Puerto Rico that we will be doing some recruitment there. For classified position recruitment, so looking at folks that are in non-teaching positions, we have set up district job fairs, so we hold a fall classified job fair, we have participated in several community job fairs where we've had a table. Our departments are holding job fairs as needed, kind of depending on what their ebb and flow of applicants looks like. And then we've made a significant change for the fall, we've moved our teacher job fair that's normally held in late April, will now be on April 1st, we've moved it from a school day to a Saturday, so that folks that are in other districts can come to our fair. But we've also made it, moved it from a teacher fair to a Cabarrus County Schools Fair, so all of our departments will also be represented there, and we will market that out, be held at Winkler Middle School on a Saturday, and that will be a massive event for all departments, licensed and classified. Secondly, we've adjusted our approaches to marketing, so we're working pretty tightly with Indeed and LinkedIn to advertise classified positions, posting on social media, I'm directly emailing, so about twice a month, I send out a direct email to folks who have applied for positions, to see if I can connect them with the department heads. We're reviewing opportunities for some television advertising, I mentioned that to you guys, to the previous board a little bit earlier, we're still kind of working through that, really wanted to make sure we get some return on investment there. And then one that I'm very excited about is, we will be scheduling some school visits with our high school seniors to explore positions in our district that they might be eligible to go into upon graduation. Some of our seniors are out looking, will be looking for employment, and then we want to be able to really utilize a talent pool that's in our district that we can hire. And then finally, we're working very tightly around application review, so the departments are reviewing applications daily, they're contacting applicants daily, so we had a really big job fair about a year ago this time, maybe a little before this, we kind of cleared out the talent pool at that point, we hired quite a few people, and then our departments have done an outstanding job keeping up as applications come in, they're immediately contacting, and again, I'm emailing twice a month directly from me to try to bring folks in. The second objective is really looking at our job postings and our hiring protocols, and so this is work that's coming, begun a little bit of it and moving forward. So in fall 2022, I worked with Ms. McLean and Megan Williams, who's one of our HR administrators, to really tease out the data from our last recruitment season, to make sure that we are going to places where we got applicants. In fall 2022 into spring 23, we're working to review and revise our job descriptions, and then we'll be working this spring around our interview protocols, making sure that we are updating so that that interview protocol matches the strategic plan. In spring of 23, we'll be, Ms. McLean and I will be working on a district profile document, looking at our data. Right now, I'm not sure we really define ourselves very well for candidates, so we want to be very clear on who we are and who we're looking for. And also in the spring, we'll be looking at our current partnerships, making sure that they are aligned to our goals, and then over the summer, we will be working to initiate conversations with new partners to improve that talent pool. Around retention, we've done quite a bit of research here, I know that's a question that's come up from the board, and that's kind of an international problem that we're all facing right now, is this churn of the job market. What we found is really, all of the things that live around recruitment fall into three buckets, right? First one is fair compensation, market-driven compensation. The second is the idea of professional growth and how we can create career ladders for folks that work in our district. And then finally, recognition in how we are systemically identifying outstanding work, right? Not randomly identifying, but making sure we're finding folks in a very systematic way. So we want to go through each of those, and I'll hand that over to Dr. Bish now to talk to you about our compensation study.
So as you know, we've been working on a salary study, and there are concerns with our salary structure, Ms. Herndon and I have had lots of conversations around this over time, so we have a salary structure for both licensed and classified that does create some problems. And so here are some of the concerns that we have identified, and this will not shock anyone here, that North Carolina's starting salary is $37,000 a year, I will share with you that Dr. Williams did something for me, he took his beginning salary the year I hired him as a lateral entry teacher, 20-some years ago, and he took his beginning salary, and he then worked through inflation. If he were to be paid, if a beginning teacher today were to be paid in today's dollars with the same buying power as he had as a beginning teacher, he would have to start at $48,000. So our teachers are starting at 37. So the buying power of our beginning salary has decreased significantly over time. The maximum salary for a teacher with a bachelor's degree and 30 years' experience is $54,000. I can go work at a bank as a teller and beat that, and I don't need a bachelor's degree. The local supplement is 12%, that is the highest among districts our size, and we are very grateful for that. That is a marketing tool that we use. The Charlotte Mecklenburg supplement is between 18 and 23%. We know that we compete with them, but we are not like them, and so there is some competition based on that, but sometimes not. The other issue we've talked about several times here is that teachers with a master's degree that was earned after 2014 are not eligible for a pay increase, and I will tell you that we hired several teachers from other states in the summer before the beginning of this school year, that when they got here and realized that they were not going to receive compensation for their master's pay, they resigned and went back home, went back to their original state. And so we are losing talent because of that decision of the General Assembly. Right now, the only opportunity for an increase is National Board certification, which is 12%. That is a process, and you must renew it, however, I want to brag a little. Megan Williams works very closely with guiding people through the National Board process for the initial and for renewal. We have 249 National Board certified teachers in Cabarrus County Schools, and I think that's phenomenal, and that's certainly a point of pride, as far as I'm concerned. So let's talk about the compensation study with license, we continue here, North Carolina does not require a master's degree for a school social worker, therefore, our social workers who have a master's degree do not get paid at a master's level, they get paid at a bachelor's level. Even though, I would submit that it's in the master's program that you really learn how to be a social worker in terms of the work we need them to do with mental health. School psychologist pay is significantly below the national average, however, school psychologists are required to have an EDS, and they are paid on that scale. So, the other issue with this is that the last full salary study was in 2011, did that when I was here with Ms. Augur, a partial study was done in 2015. What has happened is that we have this compression at the bottom end of the scale, so that adjustments to the minimum wage brought up the bottom, but we still had these people who had worked for us for a period of time that were $15 an hour, so we have compressed the bottom. And so that is an issue, and a reason for the full-scale salary study. So here is the timeline, so that you can see this, in December, we had identified who was doing this, the study started in January, we have uploaded all the documents to them, job descriptions, about everything I can imagine that they would need, we're working with a company called Evergreen out of Florida, exceptional company that has worked with a number of school districts around the country, but also here in North Carolina, they have worked with several here. So we are expecting results sometime within the next month, and then a recommendation to the board as part of our budget process, that is where Ms. Herndon and I are linked closely on the salary study and where we're going with that.
Let's also want to talk about career ladders, and so we divided those into three buckets as well, so what this looks like in terms of opportunities for growth for our employees. So for our classified employees, at present, we're researching external models for professional growth, we don't have a lot of those things that are built in at this spot for our classified employees to move beyond the work we hired them to do. We will be developing a plan for that in fall 2023, and we anticipate an implementation of that for our classified employees in spring of 2024. For our licensed employees, it's really a multi-layered approach that I'll go into a little bit more in just a second, of where we're looking at support for beginning teachers, our teacher leader cohort, which we've expanded drastically this year, and advanced teaching roles. And then for our administrators, we're looking for growth opportunities that do two things, right? Help them be prepared and successful in their current position, and getting them ready for opportunities that are coming. So for our beginning teachers, really, four levels of support here, that is wonderfully organized by Ms. McLean. So we have a new faculty orientation that many of you attended in August, our Curriculum and Instruction Department holds sessions to make sure that our teachers understand what they're teaching. Our school level, we have school-level mentors and lead mentors in each building, so each of our beginning teachers has a mentor. And then we are using structured peer observations, where we're taking groups of our beginning teachers to locations to do observations, and then use our experts to debrief with them after the observation, so that we can guarantee that they are picking up points for improvement. For our teacher leaders, we've redeveloped and reimagined, I call it plusing, so we've plusd our teacher leader cohort basic course, and we've updated what we're doing with our folks going through that teacher leader course, and we've led that into some teacher leader pathways that we're very excited about, this is all Megan Williams' work, and so I'm very proud of her for this. And so you'll see seven areas here that we've identified that our teachers are moving into, and they'll choose a pathway as they come out of our teacher leader cohorts. So some of our folks will be learning team leaders, we're using recruiters out of that, so we're actually pulling folks to do recruiting for new educators, some of our folks are leading professional development, they're moving into advanced teaching roles, our National Board cohort, we're building out some folks that want to become assistant principals, and then we're training and selecting our lead mentors from that cohort. And then for our school administrators, we have really two groups we're working with, so our assistant principals, our assistant superintendents have adjusted the AP meetings and the principal meetings to be very growth-focused, how do we grow folks there? We have a beginning of principal and assistant principal cohort, where we're supporting those folks as they come into their roles. And then we have, for our assistant principals, an assistant principal leadership cohort, and an aspiring principal leadership cohort that we've developed. The assistant principal group are some younger assistant principals that are getting into their work, they're three to five years in as assistant principals, and we're working with them on their current role. And then we have our folks that we believe are ready to go into principalships, and so we're graduating them into an aspiring principal program, and we've hired quite a few of our new principals from that group, so it's very exciting that they are stepping into those roles. And then for our principals, they are leading those assistant principal groups, so we have two veteran principals right now who are the facilitators for the two assistant principal groups, and we'll grow that. And then we're beginning to discuss some choice-driven growth groups for our principals, so what does that look like as they make some decisions about where they want to improve? We also want to recognize that we are, we're working to recognize employees in a very systematic way for the great work they're doing. So one of those things that we've done is we've adjusted our Teacher of the Year Ceremony, and we've created a celebration of excellence that will be held this year on April 20th at Great Wolf Lodge, and the ball... at Great Wolf Lodge in the ballrooms. And at that event, we will be recognizing our Teacher of the Year, our EC Teacher of the Year, our Beginning Teacher of the Year, our Teacher Assistant of the Year, Principal and Assistant Principal of the Year, Bus Driver of the Year, and a few more of the years as I figure them out. We gave a few folks here that have already been recognized, but this will be a very big event that you all will be invited to, where we are going to celebrate all of the excellence in our district. And then we're also kind of systematically working through things. So at a district level, again, I mentioned the of the years, we'll continue with our Hillbush Teacher of the Month and our Impact Awards. And then Leslie Griffin, our retention specialist, among the many things that she's doing, she is beginning work on a project called the Destination 25 Awards. And so these will be some weekly awards that folks will be able to nominate employees for that are related to our strategic plan. We also have departments that have created recognition, so the model for this would be the Facility Department's Great Wolf Lodge Award, and we're going to work with other departments for them to find those opportunities to recognize their employees. And then we're going to work with our principals in principal meetings to start sharing school best practices, so what are principals doing in their buildings to recognize the folks in their building. And then finally, I just want to mention for Objective Four, our collaboration with universities and institutions, we are reviewing and revising our work there. So this summer, this spring, we'll be reviewing our current partnerships, the universities and agencies we're working with. Over the summer, I'll work with Megan and Leslie and Angie to determine what those needs are moving forward, and then we will be redeveloping during the next school year around student teaching, educator preparation for our residency candidates. I'll skip one, we'll all come back. Our advanced teaching roles, so our folks that are taking on leadership roles in our buildings. And then Concord Middle School is exploring a lab school model at this time, so we're working with them, with our Curriculum and Instruction Department, to partner with a university to become a spot where the university is sending teacher candidates as a designated place to work with our teachers and our students.
So, one thing I want to look back to is if you will recall, we showed you that a great deal of research went into retention. What are the ways that we retain people? What are the evidence-based strategies that retain? And that was compensation, professional growth, and recognition. So we've built everything that HR is doing around those things. Now, compensation begins with the compensation study because, you know, if I can't pay my rent, then that's an issue. But the professional growth and the recognition, all three of those create that triangle of retention. So I hope you see that's where we're trying to go, is to build all three of those. And that takes some time first to do the research, figure out what it is, but then to make sure that we're putting it in place. So coming back to these strategic objectives, what I hope you see is that we've spent the last year really digging in to what do we need to do, how do we build it, and then how do we get it started as we're staffing our schools and as we're staffing our department? So it's just very helpful to be fully staffed in our department. So are our initial forays into this working? Are we seeing any kind of return on investment even at these very early stages? Because we're very early in this work, but we're working hard at it. So I want to share two things with you. One idea that's not on the PowerPoint, but that we are going to do is we are, I've already talked to Phil Furr about using our website and social media to push out an idea of job sharing with retired teachers, so that two retired teachers could job-share an open position. They could each work half the week or half the position and job-share, and that does not impact their retirement. I have a lot of folks who have said, you know, I don't want to work full-time, I don't want to come back full-time, but I'd love to teach a couple of classes. So we're going to start exploring that a little bit. The other thing I want to share with you is some data that we compare ourselves with a lot of times with Johnston County. They have about the same number of students, they have about the same number of employees and schools, et cetera. But I want to share something with you. Today, Johnston County shows on their website that their elementary, middle, high, and then facilities openings unfilled total 143 positions. Today, elementary, middle, high, and facilities for Cabarrus County schools totals 55. So I think that when you look at this, do I like 55? No, I don't. Just like I don't like 17 bus drivers, but I like it better than 40 or 45. So I want you to know that while we're doing all of this visioning and all of this development and all of this research and all of this laying foundations for the future, we're also still working really, really hard to fill openings in our schools. And I think that that speaks volumes for the folks in the department who are finding every way they can to get someone licensed and in the classroom and then support them. I will say that Angie was out all day today with a teacher who we happened to find had a four-year degree in history and would love to be a teacher, but was currently working as one of our custodians. He's in a classroom today teaching, and we are thrilled. So that, to me, is success, when we can bring those people into the profession. So I appreciate your time and your patience, appreciate the patience that it took the time for us to get this, but we really needed to build it out and share it. As I said, we will answer questions if you would like, but Dr. Williams and I will both be at the retreat on Saturday. If you want to look over the PowerPoint and then have questions then as well. Your pleasure.
I'm going to ask a few things, but I just, first of all, I want to say thank you so much because I've been wanting this for, gosh, a long time. So it's, one, awesome to see how you are recruiting and being creative, and then, two, really thinking about that retention piece. Because I wrote down here, I was like, we have great teachers and we want more of you. We want more of you, how do we do that? So I guess that's my first question, which is, some teachers don't want to be principals, they want to teach. And so how do we incentivize them, besides giving them an award, to continue to do that and maybe even help us with recruiting to find people like them?
There are several things we're doing. Money's always an issue. The advanced teaching roles for master teachers is one way, because an advanced teaching role does come with additional pay. And so they take on leadership roles, perhaps teaching a larger number of students, perhaps overseeing a group of other teachers. So that is one way. That's why when we look at the teacher leader cohort, the build-out of the seven pathways. If a teacher wants to stay in the classroom, that's wonderful. They can be a lead mentor, they can present professional development, they can do an advanced teaching role. We're looking at how do we offer professional growth for whatever your pathway is. Maybe you don't want to stay in the classroom, but you don't want to be an assistant principal. Do you want to be an instructional specialist? We have those in our CNI department, and they don't have a desire to be an assistant principal or a principal, but they love that leadership role. So we're trying to build out different avenues so that they don't have to see the only way to grow is to be an assistant principal, because that's not true anymore.
And then the other thing I would just encourage you to do is lean on your professionals that are in the schools. I know great principals have the ability to recruit in a way that, you know, people want to work for a great boss. And so I would just say that you writing emails is great, thank you for doing that, but also encourage your principals to do the same things. Also, your principals know who's in their schools. They know if that lunch lady also has a degree or that custodian. So I would just encourage you to work with them because they're amazing leaders and that's a great resource. And I would just add to my colleagues that, you know, one thing about comparing us to other counties, other counties are successful when their school boards work together. And I know that I've had conversations with every one of my colleagues here, and we're committed to this. So I think after this retreat, I think we'll have a really exciting just ideas moving forward. So I, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
So during our retreat, I want more information about the alignment destination. Just what does that look like? What are some of the steps or action plans that you have in place or that you're going to implement? I'd really love to hear about that. My other statement kind of piggybacks on what Ms. Escobar just said. I want to know if there, this all sounds great. Let me rewind. Thank you so much for putting this together. I know I've asked a trillion times about it, so I'm sorry to have been the thorn in your side. But all this being said, it looks great, but I'm not a teacher, I'm not a principal. I don't know if this works for our staff, and I don't know if there is a, I don't know, teacher work group, administrator's work group that is helping you to formulate this and make sure it fits for our teachers and fits for the folks who this is really going to impact and the folks that we really want to retain.
Yes, and so that's a great question. And so one of the things that, when we look at that assistant principal cohort of new ones and the aspiring assistant principals and the first-year principals, this came as request from them. And so we were building out based on feedback from them. When we look at the teacher leader program, when I came back in, even before Dr. Williams was in the office, I was looking at it and realized it was still the same as when it was created when I was here, you know, 10 years ago. It needed to be updated, we needed to change it. And so by talking to those who are in the cohort, by getting feedback, we had two cohorts running at the same time because of COVID. And so by leveraging feedback from all of them is how we came to, okay, we need pathways for them. We need to find other ways for them to grow as professionals other than being an assistant principal. So yes, there was feedback from them, from our principals, talking to principals about a lot of this, they've been involved in the development. We have found that the best recruiters are teachers, and so we are sending teachers to do recruitment or principals or assistant principals. We're not going, because they are the ones that are the best recruiters. So whatever their talent is, whatever their skill set is, whatever they want to grow in is where we want to put them. But we use the feedback from them to build that out.
Okay, so I hear you saying that any teacher, any of our staff that have suggestions or thoughts, please let you know.
Absolutely.
Works for me. The other thing I was going to say was, in last year's retreat, there were several sticky notes that went around the room talking about some of the feedback we got from our staff, and I just didn't know if that played into this. Or where we've addressed that, and that might be a question for another day, but this made me think of that.
Okay, okay. To be honest, I'd have to go back and find out what was on the sticky notes because I can't remember last week, Ms. Sandish, a year ago, Paul Bebra Wallace.
That makes two of us.
Mr. Furr.
Mr. Tredaway.
I would just like to, I'm coming at this from a place where I have had the privilege of working alongside the names that have been mentioned, including the two in front of us. They will never forget what it's like to be a classroom teacher. This has the fingerprints of that, plus my neighbor here. And so I feel like that's part of our secret sauce, is that we've got folks that have never forgotten and will not forget what it's like to be a teacher, and that I think is priceless right now.
Okay, any other questions or comments, board members?
Thank you so much. We really appreciate that. Okay, board members, we're going to move to the approval of the consent agenda. Listed on the agenda is all of the areas where the approval of the policies, the budget amendment, and the calendar revision. So I need a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. So I move. Second. Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Lindsay, a second by Mr. Furr. Is there any other discussion about any of these items, board members? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. So we're going to move to 10.0. One, our policies 2120 and 6140 that were put on the action agenda. So we are going to first go to policy 2120, and I know that Ms. Escobar had asked about this, and I wanted to ask her, what kind of motion would you like to put out about this policy?
I move that we approve it, but I would just ask that Ms. Burns read it for us.
Sure. The whole policy or just what?
No, just the number five.
I don't know, just that much voice.
Just the number five. What's, well, that's a small paragraph right there. Thank you.
Okay, number five is "model civility and inserted integrity to students, employees, and all elements of the community by encouraging the free expression of opinion by all board members, engaging in respectful dialogue with fellow board members on matters being considered by the board." And this was new language inserted. "And complying with all board policies that set expectations for conduct regardless of whether the policies expressly require compliance by board members." So basically, it's saying that board members will abide by the board policies even if they don't specifically indicate board members. And this was a recommended update from policies to lead the schools.
Is there any other discussion about that? Okay, hearing none, then we are going to go ahead and take a vote on this. We need...
I don't know if you had a second. I believe that Mrs. Escobar moved, but I didn't hear a second.
A second.
Okay, so we have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, so that passes. We're going to move next to the Student Wellness, 6140. And Mr. Walter, you'd asked for that to be placed on the action agenda. How would you like to proceed?
Yeah, I'd ask for, I had a question, and I guess I got the answer to that. I still have an issue with the policy because of the fact that we have two different definitions of what a school day is. Obviously, there's nobody at any of our schools from 12:01 midnight through, for the first six hours of school. That's what we say our school day is in this policy, which leads to confusion. It also has a lot of penalties for folks that don't comply with that and happen to, you know, bring, sell donuts or do something at a school for a fundraiser that doesn't involve our child nutrition program. And I don't like that. Essentially, I don't like the way it words, I don't think that makes any sense. But I asked where that came from, and that was directed to the federal regulation 7210.11, Competitive Food Service and Standards, and it does say that language is in that, is there. And it's essentially what this does, is it copies that language and puts it in our policy. But to me, it still makes no sense, so I'm not in favor of it.
Is there any other discussion about this, board members? Okay, with that being said, we're going to vote on this. So I need a motion to approve policy 6140 as presented. So I move.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Lindsay, a second by Mr. Tredaway. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, that motion passes. Okay, we're going to move, board members, to 10, thank you, Ms. Burns, very much. 10.02 Attorney Contract Addendum. Board members, at this time, we do not have a list of services that we had asked as an addendum between the two attorney firms, so we are going to move past this at this time. Okay, that is the end of our meeting, so we are going, I'm calling for a motion that the meeting be adjourned. So move.
I believe you either need to table it or move it to another agenda so it could be addressed at another agenda meeting, if you'd like to do that, whatever the pleasure the board is.
Okay. Do we need to vote on what?
Yes, if it would be, whatever the motion is, either motion to table or motion to move to February the, is it February the 6th? I think it's February the 6th, February the 13th, whatever a future meeting would be.
Okay. Board members, I'll open the floor up for motion. Is there a motion to table?
So I just need clarity. So does this mean that we have to wait to see an addendum until this timeframe, or do we get an addendum prior to that? What does that mean? I hope I made sense in that question.
We don't have an agreement between the two attorneys, so somebody's got one.
I got that, Rob. What I don't understand is what, if we table it, what we're deciding upon, what do those things mean? If we table it, do they get to the next meeting or whenever we table it to create an addendum? Because what I... Because what I feel is going to happen is we can get to February 6th, and there still be no addendum. And that, to me, that's a waste of our time, and that's not what we've asked for. That's my thoughts.
And I think that if we table it, like Mr. White said, it means that we would not add it to another agenda. Is that correct?
If you table, then it can be brought up at another meeting after the addendum is met, whether there's the opportunity to talk to Dr. Kapicki, consult with him as what the board asked the last time, and come up with an addendum for the, whatever the meeting is. So it can be tabled, yes. And then it could be brought up at a future meeting.
Is there another option, it sounds like, from the board for us not to hear this again?
If that is the wish of the board, then there, then what you could do is you could move not to move forward with an addendum or give guidance as to what's the next step, whether it's, how do you want to do with that? That's, we've got it on the agenda to do an addendum. There is nothing to be presented at this point in time. So it could be motion to table, and then that could be brought up at a later date if that's what this board wants to do.
Board, what would you like to do here in the two options?
Make a motion. We table it until there is an agreement in place or a recommendation.
Okay. So I have a motion to table the addendum to the agenda by Mr. Walter, a second by Mr. Furr. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
So we have two opposed and five to table. So that motion passes. Any other discussion about that?
Can we just say that we strongly encourage that this gets done?
We can. Okay, board members, if there's not anything else, we're going to move to 11.01. I need a call for motion that the meeting be adjourned. So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Ms. Escobar and a second by Ms. Sandage. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? With that being said, the motion passes. Thank you, everyone, for attending the meeting tonight.